Good evening. Let's call the meeting to order 23rd of July. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Present.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Bes- Bes Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Arndt?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here. All present, count four, stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to accept the agenda in order and content.
Second.
I have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. No special presentations. We have public comments. Anybody signed up? And the written one went to all council members? Okay. Okay. Nobody signed up. So let's go to the consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to our first business item, which is business item number nine, 2024 Transportation Impact Fees Evaluation Update. Ms. D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I pulled the presentation up. Let's see it. There we go. This evening, we have a presentation on transportation impact fees evaluation that we kicked off earlier this year. With the recent adoption of transportation plan and having an updated project list, this evaluation was the logical next step. The current traffic impact fees was adopted in 2012. However, the evaluations were initiated in 2011 after the adoption of 2009 transportation plan. So with that, we'll jump right into the presentation. I'm joined by Kendra Brillan with Fair &amp; Pierce. Fair &amp; Pierce also helped us put together the transportation plan and was tasked to do this evaluation after the transportation one, transportation plan was adopted. We will, as part of this presentation, will present our methodology, assumption used, of course, findings, and answer any questions you may have. There is no formal action required for this item. However, we are looking for feedback and direction on the next steps and just continuing this evaluation so that hopefully we can include this as part of the budget and also any fee schedule that we need to update. So with that, I will hand over the presentation to Kendra.
Good evening, council. I'm excited to be here to be talking about implementation action of the transportation plan that we have met so many times about. So if we can go to the next slide, just some of the topics that we're going to cover tonight. How impact fees kind of fit into the full process, a review of your current program, because as Asha mentioned, you do have a transportation impact fee program today. So we'd like to just remind ourselves of kind of what that program entails, how it works. And then we wanted to dive into some of the key recommended updates that we're bringing to you tonight in terms of the project list, inclusion of updated growth projections, and then how we arrive at a fee schedule that takes into account recent updates in state law. We'll talk a little bit about your, you know, kind of peer communities here in King County, because it's really important to kind of look around at your neighbors, understand what they're charging, because that can definitely influence how you may want to structure your program, and then absolutely we'll watch your feedback. So we'll go to the next slide. I'd like to start with a summary of how impact fees relate to the transportation plan. So as you recall, we had a very robust process to identify project ideas, including review of city plans, modeling, multimodal analysis, safety analysis, community outreach, et cetera. And from that work, we identified an expanded, unprioritized list of projects. So all of those projects are actually described in your adopted 2024 transportation plan. These projects were evaluated based on their consistency with Woodinville's mobility goal. And while the transportation plan again includes all of these projects, the transportation element, as required by state law, is actually constraining the list to, the project list, to really just be those projects that you could conceivably fund over the next 20 years. There's some flexibility there, but it is a requirement in state law that we're a little more realistic in our planning and what we're including in our comprehensive plan. The transportation element project list is kind of our prioritized project list, and that serves as the initial basis for kind of that universe of projects that we're considering for inclusion in this transportation impact fee program. And as we'll walk through later in this presentation, the rate study really kind of takes the next step to establish the nexus between this list of projects, their eligibility, and the rate that can be charged as a part of the city's transportation impact fee program on a cost per trip basis. So there's some math. We'll walk through each of those steps. But before we do, wanted to do a quick review of your current program. So just as a reminder, your current program, it's described in Woodinville Municipal Code, Chapter 3.39. And on the next slide, we're just going to quickly flash the list of projects that forms the foundation for that program. So again, as Asha mentioned, while the program was adopted in 2012, it really kind of looks back to the 2009 transportation plan as the source of investment. So some of those projects still really valid, and they're ones that have been pulled into and updated as part of the 2024 transportation plan. But some of these investments have either been constructed or maybe we've gone a different direction. So it's really clear that we do need to update this project list. And on the next slide, I just wanted to kind of walk through kind of some of the mechanics of the current program. So some of the features. The current program, the fee is $440 per daily vehicle trip. So that's that 440 per ADT. That means average daily trip. But really, it's just all of the different vehicle trips that might be associated with the land use over the course of a 24-hour day. It calculates, again, trips based on vehicle travel only, so it doesn't consider people walking, biking, transit, some of those other modes. And so the impact fee is really just based on a multiplication factor of $440 times the number of vehicle trips that are being generated by a use. So just to give an example of a few kind of common uses, we might say, in this community, for a single-family home, that ends up costing, or the impact fee rate is $4,149. Again, that's just with the assumption that a typical single-family home generates just south of 10 trips per day. And when you multiply that by $440, that's where you get to the 4,100 number. And another use, 2,000-square-foot wine tasting room, that rate would be 40,444. Wine tasting room generates roughly 45.96, or about 50 trips per thousand square feet. And when you multiply that by the 40, $440, that's where you get to that $40,000 rate for 2,000-square-foot tasting room. So that's kind of your current program. City staff could maybe speak a little to how that's administered and any of the subtle nuances, but at a high level, that's how the program works. So we'll go to the next slide here. Obviously, the current program is outdated, and we're here today to discuss recommended updates to the program. So go on to the next slide. Just wanted to walk through kind of what are we doing here? So first of all, just the steps that we're taking on this update, which I'll go into more detail in the next slides. First of all, it was to identify projects from the transportation plan that are eligible. Not every investment in your transportation plan or even in your comprehensive plan is eligible for impact fees. We needed to really look at them, substantiate that there was a capacity nexus, and then it made sense for inclusion. We worked very closely with city staff to make that determination. Then for each of those projects, we look at them and we run them through some calculations to understand their eligibility. And from that, we assign a cost per trip to land uses and develop a fee schedule, and that is the basis for the rate study. So, next slide. This map will look really familiar. Looks a lot like the project maps that we showed as a part of the transportation plan. What it includes is a curation of the projects that we found to be good candidates for inclusion in the impact fee program. So if you recall, the transportation plan includes well over 40 projects. This is a much smaller subset, about 17 projects, that we thought had a good basis for inclusion. And then next slide, I'll just kind of walk through some of our key updates. So again, updated the project list to make sure that we've got projects that we want to move forward with, including the program. We've got the appropriate costs for those. The next thing was also, again, it's a cost per trip basis, so it was to really understand how much growth do we anticipate in the city of Woodinville over the life of the plan, over the next 20 years? So that was really looking at the growth that we've got in the city, and then also to understand how that would result in trip growth. And I want to make one subtle distinction here, is that the trip growth that we're looking at isn't just vehicle trips. Because we have such a multimodal project list, it makes sense to do the impact fee program based on person trips. And that gives us a much nicer nexus to tie developments, demands, and impacts on the system to the need for a multimodal project list. So if you do it based on vehicle trips, it's a little harder to make the justification for funding some of the really exciting complete streets and multimodal projects that you have as part of your plan. So that's a big change that we've made. We have also, we're going to be tying in a lot of recent updates that's happened in state law, and I'll talk about those in a couple of, or the next slide here. But the 2023 legislative session really kind of did some things that impact how we structure the programs. Some of the changes are really beneficial to cities, so we'll talk about those. And then last but not least, after we go through all of this work, we will be developing a new fee schedule, again, based on person trip generation for different land uses around the city. So I'll go to the next slide. This is a boring one. I'll try to be quick. I will not read all the words on the slides. But these are the three major legislative updates that will impact how we structure Woodinville's transportation impact fee program. So the first one here, E2SSB 5258, I have no idea how you're supposed to actually say that, but it really encourages cities to structure their fee programs to provide a wide variety of different residential land use types. This is related to the middle housing legislation, and essentially, it says, please don't just have one single-family rate. Please offer a variety of rates such that if we have smaller homes, cottage homes, condominiums, different types of multifamily that might be of a smaller footprint, and you would expect fewer people to live in it and to have fewer trip generation, to provide different categories that they can identify with and hopefully pay a little less in impact fees, which are commensurate with their lesser impacts on your transportation system. The second legislative change, ESSB 1337, essentially just states that if you have accessory dwelling units, you may charge those no more than 50% of your single-family rate at the same. So it just kind of makes quick, that's a very easy change. And then the last one is probably the most exciting change, which was Senate Bill 5452. And this is the legislation that now allows cities to pay for, and I'm going to read it here, bicycle and pedestrian facilities that were designed with multimodal commuting as an intended use. So this is really exciting, because this allows us to pay for some of our trails projects that were previously ineligible for impact fee programs. So given kind of your project list and a lot of the exciting things going on here in Woodinville, this is a really great change. So I'm going to get into now a lot of numbers on this slide, and I want to, I need to caveat this slide, because there are some very large numbers, and I wanted to state. So we've gone through and looked at your 17 projects for inclusion. They have a total capital value of $125 million. When we run through our eligibility calculations, we find that roughly a third of that total capital cost of all those projects would be eligible. So we're extracting existing deficiencies. We're using the model to understand who's using these facilities. And so that's where we arrive at an eligible capital cost of $43 million. When we spread those costs over the growth in PM peak hour person trips that we expect over the life of your comprehensive plan, that is an additional 2,847 PM peak hour person trips that are occurring on your system. So those are a lot of numbers, but I think where the rubber really hits the road is in understanding what does that mean for a land use perspective? If I'm coming for a development project in Woodinville, how much do I have to pay? And these numbers here, I have to say, this is your absolute maximum defensible rate. This isn't a recommended rate. This is allowing you to know, this is the max that you could charge based on the projects that you have in your program, the eligibility of those projects, and the growth that we anticipate over the life of the program. So you can see that the cost per trip that you could justify is up to $15,000 per PM peak hour trip. And when you translate that into different uses, you can kind of see that on the screen, but a very high number, $21,593 per single-family home. You can see that we've got lots of other kind of multifamily uses here shown, again, reflecting kind of the new state laws. And then going back to that tasting room example, that would be $200,749 per, for a 2,000-square-foot wine tasting room. So again, all of these, this is your maximum cap rate, not a recommended rate. Many cities elect to charge something less than their maximum eligible rate. So the, one of the last slides I have here on the next screen is showing what this would look like maybe if you only charged half of that rate, which that again is a typical practice. Some communities charge all the way, 100% of that maximum rate, but some go as low as, you know, 20 or 30%. So it's really a choice for you where you want to fall in that range. So if you were to do half that rate, we're talking about 7,500 per trip, and when you look at what that means from a single-family home perspective, that's just a little over 10,000 per single-family home, and the same tasting room would be 137,450, again, for that wine tasting room. So with those numbers, just wanted to give it some context with how that compares among your neighbors. So we'll look at the peer community fees in the next couple of slides here, and I think we can just skip straight to the bar chart. So as you can see here, what we've tried to show is your peer communities, primarily communities that are here in King County, mostly your neighbors, similar communities. You can see there's a, there's a wide range. The highest impact fee rate, both in the state and in our region, is charged by North Bend. They're a little bit more than $15,000 per PM peak hour trip. Samamish is close behind them, and you could see if you were to charge your maximum rate, you'd be really in that North Bend to Samamish category. As we look at other cities, Bothell, Issaquah Shoreline, Kenmore, Newcastle, Redmond, Bellevue, Kirkland, and Mercer Island, you can see that the average rate is just a little under 10,000 per PM peak hour trip. And if you were to charge that half rate, you'd be kind of close to that area. And then obviously, just looking at your current program, you're definitely at the low end among peer communities. So I think my last slide here is just to talk about what is next. We're here to listen to your feedback tonight, and following that, we would be developing an ordinance and returning with, you know, kind of a full rate study for draft introduction and adoption. So that's all you got from me tonight.
Do we have any questions? Any comments? Discussion? Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Can we go back to the bar chart, please? Thank you. So how long have we been at this rate that we're at currently? Do we know?
Since 2012. So the current 440 per ADT is since 2012. Actually, they, so when, when the, when the last TIF was adopted in 2012, instead of going straight to 440 ADT, they did a phase out for five years. So they started at 295. So 2017 is when $440 per average daily trip kicked in. So 17, so seven years.
So this might be part of the reason why we're a little behind on our infrastructure improvements? Okay. Do we have any insight from an economic development standpoint of what the impact would be, for example, if we went up to the 50% or the average? I don't think we should go all the way up to the max fee. That's like, would probably blow everyone out of the water, but do we have any insight into that?
We don't have anything tangible, but anecdotally, I think you touched on a very important point, right? And that's why we asked the team to include the example of the tasting room being an common business in Woodinville. Today, that's 40-something thousand dollars they're paying for that 2,000-square-foot tasting room. Even at 50, you're going to 147. That, anecdotally, has got to be a problem, to your point about economic development, especially when you're trying to get a new business. So that's part of, I think, the feedback we were looking for from council tonight is that's, to me, seems really high, but this is the feedback that I, that we need from you guys.
Yeah, especially if we have the jobs growth that we have and we are taking a look at new businesses coming in. I mean, obviously, we want to be able to fund the infrastructure improvements that are needed. We don't want to get back into a place like we are now. We're really, really having to triple down on our budgets and invest in things that should have been invested in a long time ago. But I think if we were to jump up to the max fee, we would be chasing everybody out of here and probably the new businesses we're anticipating wouldn't come. So another question that I have is, can we look at a phased approach again? So similar to what they did in 2012, is that something that's on the table here?
Absolutely. And I think that's the kind of feedback that we are looking for. You know, 50% was presented, just as an example, to show the comparison on where the fees fall, and also to show the comparison on here. Yes, we can look at the phased approach, you know, similar to the last year of five years or three years. That, absolutely, we can look into that as well.
If I may, one other addition that I think would be helpful, that's added into a lot of other ordinances, and I would recommend here, is to include a CPI escalation factor so that it also grows and keeps pace with inflation over time.
Okay. I think that that is a great, especially the jumps that we saw during COVID times, right? Things just asphalted, like just jumped. The other question that I had on this was, when we think about our, how we pay our staff and how we take a look at that, we try to be in the like upper third, right? To middle. Is that where we're trying to be, if I remember?
Yeah. It's, I forget the percentage, but it's on either side of the...
The average?
Yeah.
Okay. So taking a look at the average would be in line with what we do for pay for staff, for example. And I think it would still make us very, very competitive amongst our neighbor communities. So I'll open it up to the rest of council for their comments.
Councilmember Arndt?
Thank you. I just have a kind of a follow-up question on Councilmember Evans' point. At what point during the development process are these fees collected by the city? Is it early or is it at the completion of the project? I'm just, I'm asking this because I'm thinking about a lot of the current projects we have in the pipeline, and would a change in ordinance impact them directly, or is it something where we have already collected fees on the front end?
So currently, and I will also have our development services director chime in if I am going off base on the code, but currently, it's at the issuance of building permit is when the TIPS are collected for all, all projects.
Okay. So we could say that any change we made to this would not necessarily affect any project where there are currently cranes or construction going, but it would be solely something that would come on future, future buildings.
A number of those are permitted, and it gets a lot more nuanced, right? So a lot of those are permitted. A lot of them are permitted with the shell buildings, for example, right? But the tenants, in some of those cases, haven't been identified. So when those tenants come in, they'll pay impact fees that adjust them to what that tenant would actually be. So there's some math that gets involved from the shell to the actual tenant. But those, and in many of our DAs that we have, they were vested to that development, or the impact fee that was in place when those DAs were approved as well.
Okay, thank you. I fully support some sort of inflation adjustment tacked on to whatever ordinance we choose. And I personally think that that average, or right about that 50%, is probably a sweet spot that puts us in with our neighbors and helps cover some of the really huge increases we've seen in, in costs for these transportation projects.
Councilmember Bes Campbell?
Hey there. Let me just get my camera on. Hi. So looking at the numbers here, going from where we currently are, going up to 50% really doesn't move the needle in terms of that much difference between us and Mercer Island. But when I look at Kirkland, Bellevue, and Redmond, they are significantly larger than we are as a city. But the cities that look closer to our size, Newcastle, Kenmore, Issaquah, and Samamish, they're higher. Now, I think Samamish is a little bit too high, and that might be part of the reason they haven't seen a lot of development. But I would be looking somewhere maybe the 60 to 70%. It would get us sort of into the same band as similarly sized cities, but not so much so that it would impact development. I do think the addition of reductions for affordable housing, can we make that a little bit more robust and say that no affordable housing would be subject to fees more than 25%, for example?
Yes, there's a lot of different provisions in state law that allow for that, and we've spoken through some of those provisions with city staff. But I think the spirit of what you're asking for is absolutely something that you could, you could put in, and it's, it's very much encouraged.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, so I think I'm around the peer city average, I think, where I would like to see this. We do need to create that balance in a phased approach to make sure we're able to encourage the growth in terms of businesses and the growth that we've been working on here, while also making sure that we're able to fund the infrastructure to support this. As we continue to grow, funding infrastructure will be paramount to ensure the success of these additions and the city as a whole and to maintain the quality of life in the city. So I think putting us around that peer city average will allow us to do a little bit of both without harming the growth that we would also like to see at the same time.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah. I think Councilmember Bes Campbell was starting to touch on it, but I, I think the rate should be based on the size and the roads and the future roads that we're going to put in. So I don't see, yeah, I don't see why we have to increase the price while we're, we're going to be raising the price for an ADU. We're going to be raising the price for a single-family house by this much, you know, 10,000, what was it, between 10 and 20? It's ridiculous. You know, the young people that are trying to buy right now are having to face increased prices, and for the city, county, state to be tacking on all these extra fees and turning it into a, you know, it's making a gauntlet that they have to go through. I'm not sure that that's really what we want to do, be responsible for increasing the price and the unaffordability for ADUs or doing what we really want to encourage. So take a look at the, the rates and how much... So take a look at the, the rates and how much road, you know, do it by, by roadway or by the infrastructure to make it appropriate because those bigger cities are doing a lot more new construction, new roads, new work. And I think we have a lot of our major roadways already defined.
So I think the, the sweet spot, the trick here is since, so the rate, current rates, 2012 hasn't been adjusted. Do we have any idea of the other jurisdictions on that list of, of when they've adjusted? So I assume that we got behind in 2012 as other jurisdictions raised the rate? Is that a fair characterization?
I can speak to some of these from memory. Mercer Island updated their impact fees in 2021-ish. Kirkland recently updated theirs in the last two years. Bellevue updated theirs in the last year or so. I think they're actually looking to do another update. Redmond just is finishing their transportation plan. They will be doing an update. I'm not sure about Newcastle. Kenmore, I think, recently updated their program. Shoreline just adopted their program earlier this year. I don't have details on Issaquah. Bothell, that's their current program. They will be looking to update their program next year. I don't have details on Samamish. And with North Bend, I think they'll be updating it in the next couple of years because they've actually, they've had a high, a high rate, but they've CPI adjusted it. So that, that program was established back, and I want to say 2016, 2017, but they had a really healthy rate at the time and they had a CPI adjustment, so it's floated up with that.
So I guess what I was driving at, we, we've, we've gotten behind on our, our road and infrastructure projects. So I, I do think that we need to increase the rate to fund the infrastructure that is, is coming because of population growth and business growth. But at the same time, we raise it too much. We're going to make it hard for affordable housing. We're going to make it hard for single-family residents and ADUs and some of the stuff that we're emphasizing. I am excited about being able to collect some fees for some of the, the trails that we're doing. So I'm, I'm in favor of the, the average, maybe slightly above, maybe with some carve-outs to, you know, a developer comes in and they want to do affordable housing. We could give them a slightly better rate if they're going to do a, a component of affordable housing because we want to keep that affordable. So I, I'm in favor of somewhere around the 50%. I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the staff dig into this as far as at, at what level do they feel we would be hampering businesses setting up in the city and how we could still encourage affordable housing and how we could still meet our infrastructure requirements on that. So I'm somewhere in the, the middle with some carve-outs, I guess, is where I'm at.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. So we have the MFTE program for affordable housing, which waives property tax for 12 years, right? For eligible units. Is there something similar to that for transportation? Or is there, is it just a percentage of what the traffic impact fees would be?
What I know about is, and I'd have to go back and review, there is a provision for single-family housing construction, residential construction to delay impact fee payment to occupancy. I can't remember if that law sunset or not. That's been in place since the Great Recession. So that's, that's one. It's just for them to make sure that it's actually housing that people are purchasing. What I would say is also, city has a lot of policy discretion. So one thing, and I don't know that you'd want to elect on this, you can also elect to, you know, not, you, for example, the city of Samamish or the city of Shoreline, they have a lot of different use types that they've exempted from impact fees. So for them, that's being business friendly. However, I want to explain the other side of that. And that's that, the way that an impact fee program works. If the city chooses to exempt a use that doesn't have a provision in state law that allows you to do that without a payback provision, which is only really the case for a few specific uses, low-income housing, affordable preschool. If it's not one of those uses, if you choose to exempt or provide a reduction, you need to pay back the impact fee program from non-impact fee accounts. So for example, if you choose, hey, we don't want to charge to some use because we really like it in the city and it's not one of those very few uses that I've talked about, then you would need to make sure that you're reimbursing the program.
From like the general fund?
Wherever that's coming from is your, your choice.
And when you say low-income housing, is that 30% AMI and lower? Or is it anything that falls under the arch guidelines? Or is there any percentage of AMI?
There is a very specific definition and I think it's, actually, I'd rather get back to you on that because I don't want to misstate the specific percentages.
That's great. So if we could just get that, that would be great. I, I think that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
If I may just add, on the deferred, one of the point that Kendra made on the deferred payment, that was something that council at, in, during 2012 review of TIF, we had asked staff to look into, to defer the payment unless, until, you know, once the, the unit is sold or built out. And I think when the staff did research at that point, it was determined and recommended that that adds a lot of administrative cost on city, potential financial issues and exposure on the city. And at that point, that was, that was not as a recommended strategy for reducing or exempting the impact fees or deferring impact fees.
Councilmember Taylor.
Going back to the rates and peer communities, would there be a way to pull some data from other communities that are competing with us? You know, Duval, Monroe, Snohomish, Mall B, you know, get out into, on the edge of Snohomish County, right where we're at, and see where they're at? I'd, I'd want to be competitive in that direction as opposed to competitive with built-out Shoreline or, or Kenmore. So would, would it be possible to?
We, we can, we can certainly provide some additional information. And, and let me just say, on, on the peer comparison, right? There's always, it's never an apples-to-apples comparison, right? And I think that's very important for this council to consider as we have this discussion because it, you know, it was maybe two, three councils ago when we were talking about fees for development, permit fees. And the conversation was very clearly from council, we want development to pay its full, its, you know, full share, full share. And that's a perfectly valid position. On the other end of it, and it's something that this council, I think, needs to consider, is that if you get to 100%, certainly, even 50%, arguably, you're going to, as some of the councils touched on, start hampering new businesses and new housing and everything else, right? And I'll highlight for this one, you know, when you're looking at these peer cities, again, it's not apples-to-apples. So like when you look at like some, like the Newcastle is a good example, their economic mix in their community is much different than Woodinville, right? The, part of the reason that we have finances to be able to do a lot of what we do is because we have a very robust business community in our, for a size of community that we are, which is not the case in some of these other examples. So right, where they're coming up with money to do projects is a different mix than where we're coming up with. That's an important consideration here because, you know, if we go too high trying to hit them on the front end, we're going to hurt them on the back end, which hurts revenues that we also depend on for a number of other uses, right? Construction projects included, but everything else that we do as well. So it is that balancing act. Certainly, and getting back to councilmember Evans' point, anecdotally, if you go to 100%, it will crater new businesses guaranteed. Even 50% going from, and maybe this is where we need to look at some nuance and this is some input from council, I think. You know, going from 4,000 to 10,000 on a house is a jump. Going from 40,000 to 147,000 on a winery is, that's crazy and frankly. So that's, that's something I think, and I understand the, the desire to want to pay for infrastructure, which is important, certainly, and have new development cover its costs. But that will have unintended consequences, as we hear that phrase pretty regularly, that we need to be very cognizant of as we're giving direction on, on where to go with this.
Yeah, we, we've seen a lot of business that's kind of jumped across the, the border into Snohomish and would like to see it here and would hate to have chase them out, you know, with higher costs. They already talk about high costs, so.
And I'm just going to reiterate what, kind of a version of what I said before. I mean, what you said, Mr. City Manager, is exactly what we need. I mean, as far as what our future needs are, what the rate we adopt means to affordable housing, means to businesses, means to future development, but also balanced with what it means to our future roads and infrastructure needs, trails and all these other things. So I would certainly like to see staff come back with a recommendation on where we should be to meet some of the goals that this council's adopted and the vision that the council's adopted without going too far based on just averages without context, not apples-to-apples and unintended consequences that you said. So, you know, nobody on the council is an expert in that. We kind of rely on you guys to give us some guidance on that. And so that's kind of my stance on where, where should we be to encourage affordable housing, encourage businesses to be here? We're going to have a, a robust conversation coming up on what the business community in part funds that we're going to be able to talk about tonight because of the sales taxes that we get in Woodinville. So we don't want to kill that because some of the stuff people are going to be excited about is not going to be possible if we kill the goose. It's laying the golden eggs on that. So I, I, I would, I would like to have more conversation and have a recommendation from staff on that.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
Thank you. The one thing that I will say is that with these, these transportation fees, they're to help offset the cost that the city already has to pay. I'm very aware that we don't always have really great years for budgets. Sorry, we don't have really great budget years. We don't have infinite supply of funding. That's why a lot of our projects have languished. It's important that we charge fair fees. When I look at Bothell and Shoreline, they certainly have a significant amount of development. I don't think that their current fees have necessarily slowed anything down. I think we can probably find some really good carve-outs that are in alignment with our values. But one of the values I haven't heard mentioned that I'd like to just touch on a little bit is this saves our citizens money. You know, yes, we receive a lot of money in terms of sales tax, but we also have a lot of money that is paid by the people of Woodinville. They fund their city as well. So I do want to consider the fairness aspect to Woodinville. We are having this development here. We live with this development, particularly when it comes to businesses coming in. And I think that that needs to be added to the equation as well. How much are we willing to ask the citizens to subsidize development? And are we really asking our developers for a lot? I think we can find ways to save developers when they are developing in ways that we appreciate and that we value, particularly when it comes to lower-income housing. But I don't think that we should just wholesale say the rates are too high and people will leave. We're not seeing that in Bothell or in, even in these communities like Redmond. You still see development. So I'd like to see the people put in that equation as well because we won't always have the budgets that we have right now.
Any further questions, discussion? Do you feel like you got a general idea of what, the direction?
We do, and this is our initial touch point, with just trying to get, this is where our upper limit was. Here's what it looks like with the average of 50%. So this is, this definitely gives us some direction and to come up at the next touch point with council.
And thank you for the presentation. Lot of numbers.
Sorry.
Okay, business item number 10 appropriately is pavement condition. Mrs. DeSouza again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening again. Equally excited to present the next business item. And I will open up that presentation as well. So let's see. I think we could do this. There we go. So today, we are just presenting overview of the pavement evaluation that we completed recently, I think less than two weeks ago. And so this evaluation, this 2024, the last time the pavement evaluation was done in 2018. At that point, the city took the initiative to have a programmatic approach to pavement, pavement condition and preserving pavement throughout the city. And then the city started into this initiation, initiative of doing a six-year program approach for pavement preservation. And with the council direction after the 2018 evaluation, there was a, I want to say, most aggressive pavement preservation program that went to, went into effect since 2018 until about now. So this was about the time, it's six years now. And so we are, we evaluated, did the pavement evaluation for the entire city street network. And so the presentation will provide the results of that evaluation and plan for the next six, next six years. So what were we looking at when we took up the study? Similar to 2018, we looked at the city's entire street network, which is defined roughly by, we have different types of streets, street classified, based on the volume of traffic, based on what communities it serves, residents it serves. And so those are the miles of streets that we have evaluated. City has roughly close to 50 miles of streets, close to four miles of principal arterials, seven miles of minor arterials, five miles of collector arterials and a good chunk of it is also the local access streets. And so this is roughly eight million square feet of pavement surface that we have within the city limits. This is just showing, this is just showing our street classification within the city. Red reflects the principal arterial, yellow is, yellowish is the collector arterial, green is minor arterial and then everything gray within the city limit is local access streets. So just a really high overview of how the streets are classified within the city.
What's, Asha, what's the, what's the dotted line there in the middle? There's not a salt, what's that dotted?
Mr. Mayor, are you talking about, right? There's the minor arterial, so there are subclassification, yes, between, on Duval, northeast, right here, if I have my cursor. It's a minor arterial, there's a subdivision, there's a two, between minor arterial and principal arterial, there's a functional characteristics difference and that's where the break in the traffic volumes are as well. And so these street classification is based on our municipal code in chapter 12.12. This is another chapter that we will be looking a little bit more closely since now we have more, in, in terms of how the functionality works as well. But this is the current street classification in the city code. So what did we find after we evaluated close to 50 miles of streets? So we found, so in addition, those 50 miles of streets were broken down into 365 different segments of the street. It did not include the state route, which is of course a part, a good part of our city system. We evaluated the condition just so to have as a backup when we do go ask for justification on some of the projects that we are doing, especially when we have to do the pavement preservation and overlay. So we did look at it, but it is not included in the rating for the city system itself. There was a software, the, there's a typical industry standards that we, that the consultant used. It's called the Paver Pavement Management System Software. It is, uses GIS, more recent, as, recent industry softwares and systems and platforms so that we can actually make it more active use in real time as we make, as we go through projects. So the rating, the things that are included in the street rating is of course all the things that you typically see. They just have a very technical terms for it. There are alligator cracking, potholes, utility patches, or distortions and any weathering in this, on this pavement surface itself. So some of those factors include, are included to rate the streets. The street rating is, which is also known as the pavement condition index, which you will hear staff say PCI. That is the common terminology used for rating the street. So based on all the evaluation that we did, and so the actual evaluation, the street evaluation was done by actual driving all the streets. by actual driving all the streets within the city and looking at the conditions of all the pavement. And based on all that evaluation and then doing some more analysis, the average rating for all the roads in the city was rated at 78. So that's on a scale of zero to 100 in terms of PCI. So PCI of 78 was the average rating for the city. So just as a reference, that was in 2018, that was at 72. So that is the rating for the city, which is, which is considered very good for a city, our size and city in general, based on the number of street miles we have and just the general condition of the streets. There's also further breakdown of PCI based on street classification. As you can see, majority of, all of our city streets are over the 75, 78 threshold or close to that, which tells that overall we are a street classification, our street rating is extremely good when you compare to other cities, not just within the state, but around the nation as well. So again, just another comparison as to the testament of just providing that aggressive active payment, payment preservation program and funding for that. You can see that in 2018, we had 57% of our streets within, these are just categories of good, fair, poor, very poor. They're just generalized categories based on the PCI range. And the industry standard is you typically want to be around seven, between 70 and 80. Anything over 80 is typically what someone like, some agencies like WashDad would strive for their state routes and highways. For the city streets, 75 to 80 is considered an industry standard as an excellent or good. So as you can see, when we started as the same evaluation in 2018, 57, 60% of our streets were rated good. And now because of all the investment that we have done since 2018, that number right now as a starting point for next six years at 82%. So definitely credit goes to council for giving that directive and funding, funding those projects. So just giving you an example as to what, again, not, it's not a black and white rating, but just kind of gives you an example of what a PCI of good would be. You know, good is usually does not have those alligator cracking or maintenance. Those are usually within a year or two of overlaid, overlaid roads. Fair, you will see, start seeing some, some distress on the road, but those are, those could be addressed by routine maintenance. And this is the crack sealing that we did when, last time we did the 124 sidewalk project. So just, just an examples of what you start seeing. And then as you start seeing more load impacts and cracking, that you see that the pavement starts to give out, and that's what you would see poor and very poor is it's really close to being resurfaced or rebuilding that road. So, and also it has a lot to do with, of course, utility, utilities. It has to do also with the age of the pavement as well. So these are just, it is an example to show you what some of those categories would look like. So this is, this is the current PCI map for the city street. And I'm pretty excited to see the colors on that street. Engineers usually like numbers, but sometimes colors also help. And seeing those colors, especially what they stand for, it's pretty exciting. So as you can see, 80%, you see green color standing out the most. And of course, the zoom, the yellow is probably not a good color to use on the screen. But as you can see, good part of our city is, good part of city streets are rated or at good rating. So just wanted to share that. There are some, as you can see, there are some streets that are rated yellow, which are, you know, poor, if you want to say that category. There are some streets that are rated fair, but it's also the ones that we didn't do in the last six years. And now it's the age and it's just catching up on needing, needing the next round of maintenance. So again, just highlighting the, the difference between what 2018 starting point looked like and what 2024 starting point looked like. So just give a couple of seconds to just absorb that two maps. As you can see, on the left, you can see a lot more yellow. You could see blue, a lot more blue, some red or darker red. Whereas the 2024, their majority of those are green and there is some yellow and blue. Those are fair and, and poor as well. There are a couple of sections of red, which is very poor. One of that was, I had shown that as an example by McLindons and by Car Wash. So that's, that's just wanted to show this, the, there is a table that is on the, on the left side map, and that shows the investment that the city made in the last six years. And it was close to $8.8 million over six years. So little over $1.5 million over, $1.5 million per year over six years. And then I think we had over 10 projects, just different overlay projects that we have done. So, and of course, that is reflected in the map that you see on the right. So of course, we, that was the, the good part of where we are going. But if we don't, if we continue to, to stay at that green and not do anything, of course, those are all going to slip back to yellow and green, or yellow and blue and, and eventually red. So we need, staff's recommendation is to continue that active pavement preservation program and continue to maintain that level PCI of 75, 78, which is still a good condition and rating for the city street. So as part of this evaluation, similar to what we did in 2018, we looked at different budget scenarios to see what level of funding brings you, what type of rating and what's your backlog, backlog, meaning if you didn't address those streets, how they start slipping in the, in the quality or in terms of the pavement condition itself. So of course, we did ran different evaluations, just like how technical we like to do modelings. So modeling of different scenarios. So we looked at different scenarios, but this is all in the staff report and also in 71, I think there's a total 71 page report that was included with your staff report. I hope you found that interesting. But the first 20 or 25 pages are the worth reading if you want something to read as a, as a, as a recommendation. But this pretty much just summarizes what that report says in terms of where the city, or what's, what's the city's investment goal for what rating that they want to maintain. So there are, as you can see, right now, we are at 78. And if we, which as I mentioned, it is a very good PCI, very good rating for city streets. And it just highlighted in, yeah, in blue, just as a staff recommendation. That doesn't mean that is, that is the limit that the city, that is the limit that the council sets. But I think later in the item, during the CIP discussion, we do have, we have the pavement overlay as one of the CIP program where I believe our recommendation is to have $2.5 million per year. But I wanted to, we wanted to show you where that number has come from, the justification backup on that one. So again, maintaining that $2.5, $2.6 million per year still maintains our streets at a very good to excellent PCI. So that, that is pretty much where that lands. And this is of course, a six-year program. So it would be 2.5 to 2.6 million per year. And I think that was pretty much it in terms of any questions that the council may have?
Thank you. I'm happy to, I'll take some questions, we'll put out for questions now. But I just want, before we get started, like, thank you for the work. And I, I, I can tell when we leave Woodenville streets. And I don't know that the public always understands some of these are state routes. But when you leave Woodenville streets, you know it. So good work. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yeah, thanks for stealing my stun, thunder there, Mr. Mayor. I was also gonna reach out and say, hey, thank you. This is something to celebrate, especially given the level of street durability in some places. I've had an opportunity to travel recently and understand that we're doing a fantastic job. One of the questions that I had regarding this, though, is that oftentimes, where is not just utilization by traffic, but is also erosion and drainage and other things like that? How are those things considered as part of this?
So this study, this evaluation gives us a general idea in terms of where this, how are pavement, how is the pavement condition for the street? When we actually start, when we actually identify a project, we do a in-depth review of the pavement evaluation. And it's not just pavement evaluation. And I think it is, we may be one of the few cities that we not only look at pavement condition, but we also look at drainage. Some of the minor drainage issues that we may have, we address those issues. Sometimes we also address any sidewalk or walkway issues that we may have. We have also addressed, we'll also look at these streets that are under that project to see, are these, does this require overlay or can it be a cracks, like a crack seal? So maintenance, maintenance or combination of it. So the in-depth evaluation, including some of those things, if they're minor, of course, we won't use the pavement overlay project and do a drainage project. But if it is something that can be addressed and is minor, as part of, let's say, can we install a curb? Can we, you know, remove the curb? What, can we relocate the catch basin so that it drains better? And depending on the pavement, depending on the overlay itself, there may be some drainage modifications needed. So even though they are strictly pavement overlay project, we do look at a little bit beyond that and in a way, more, more comprehensive look at the pavement.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor.
I'll yield to Councilmember Best Campbell. She had her hand up first.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
I appreciate the staff report and particularly all the details of how far we've come in the last few years. It's really been noticeable and appreciated by the public. But while all of us understand what these PCI numbers are, I want to sort of bring it back to a level that people will understand. Currently, there are neighborhoods that haven't seen road improvements for 25 years. So with this program, when we really get it finalized, when all the roads are brought up to the standard, could we tell the public, you will see X number of years shaved off of pavings and repairs on your road? Because these numbers are really as relevant to the people that we represent. So if we could see some sort of, and I know it would have to be arranged, but some number of, this would shave X number of years off of the weight you would have between pavings. I think that would be really interesting to share with the public. It's something that they could easily digest. But I think that's really where the impact of this program is, is that we're not waiting until the roads are completely destroyed before doing any sort of infrastructure improvement. So if we can find some way of making it easy for the public to digest and understand how great this program is, I think it would really be a service to staff to show us how hard you've worked and what it actually means going forward. We could throw numbers out all day, but the things that matter most are what the public perceives our program to be successful. And they perceive success based on, does their road look nice? And a lot of the roads in our city look nice, and I think we should capitalize on that and lead with that and tell the public, well, it's actually fewer years in between repavings.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this presentation. I think this is great. It hasn't always been this way in the past. Probably 12 years ago, 10 years ago, council was asking for, they wanted to set up a program just like this. It's cheaper to maintain it than it is to allow it to go down, as Councilmember Best Campbell kind of mentioned there. And so this, this is one of those things that we have to do, just to keep our city up and not let it go down to the point where we have to pay a lot. I like, I like the presentation. I like the way you did this. Have you thought about doing sidewalks with same type of coverage? Because, you know, we've, we've had lots of different quality and, and issues with trees and all of that. And I know it's getting fixed, but you know, where, where are we at? And as we add sidewalks per, per our plans, how are we going to maintain them? Because we have to keep that for the people that are using them.
So Councilmember Taylor, we have started to look at the sidewalk and the project that we completed this year, earlier this year, that some of the areas within downtown was our first step towards that programmatic approach for sidewalk. And you will definitely see, the council will definitely see in the budget ask under streets for sidewalk, sidewalk panel replacement, sidewalk repairs as part of a programmatic approach. So we are starting to look, and it is based on, identified based on the rating as itself throughout the city. And so we are approaching the sidewalk program, similar to pavement program as well. So you will start seeing that. But it is more under maintenance versus actually a CIP project.
And then the bicycle people will probably be asking the same thing, but great job.
Can we go back to the slide where it showed the, the blue and yellow current? Yeah, that one. Now, okay. So when you're doing this, I think you've talked before how it makes sense to do projects in like one geographic area. Is that still the case? So when you look at that, I mean, the ones kind of stand out a little bit is that area where, where the cursor up dip up to the right, in that area, you have a yellow and some blue and all in the same geographic area. So as an example, and I'm not saying that's what you have to do, but does it make sense to stay for costs? Does it make sense to stay in one area, to do one area at a time? Or do you hop from one yellow to another yellow to an yellow, yellow across the city, that type of thing? Or how's that? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. So yes, and that's how we did the last six year, the programmatic approach was that, that we would get areas, if, if council members, we did like the veg neighborhood. And we broke that down to two different region, but still in the same, same corridor, if you may, if you would like to say that way. Similar to that, we also did the residential neighborhood. We did the industrial neighborhood. So we'll do the same approach. It definitely worked. It helps with the, I think the big one is that the mobilization, demob cost that the contractors will charge if you have one project here and then one in the other part, other part of the city. So there's definitely cost savings if you group those streets rated, you know, similar rated, blue, yellow, whatever those are. So by that region, that's how we would approach. So I'm, I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, you brought, brought that up because I think the first, one of the first projects that we would be thinking for this biennium would be starting out with the residential area potentially, and then moving to the industrial area. The reason being, yes, you are seeing yellow and blue in the downtown corridor, but we have all the construction projects that are coming up in next four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years, that we will do that as part of our CIP projects, like the trust project, roundabout projects. So overlaying right now, it just does not make sense. If anything, it goes against the grain. So we will be doing the residential. You most likely will see recommendation as a residential project. Again, it doesn't have to be covered. We will focus on the residential, shift to industrial, and then maybe downtown as, as we go through the six-year cycle.
Okay, thank you. I, I also, like, like I said before, I get, I get lots of questions and emails about, you know, ruts and potholes and stuff. And, and almost all the time, it's on a state route, and I have, I have to explain that. So I think that it would behoove us in the city to get that message out that we, those aren't city roads. We have very little say on how that, you know, we can't fill a pothole on a state route and we can't. So I think that behooves us as a city. So I'd like to see a little bit, whatever that might look like, because, because that is a really common concern and question. And like I said, when I'm out and about and driving around, you know when you're leaving a city road and going out onto a state route or whatever. And unfortunately, there's a cost to that. There's a cost to your tires, your alignment, your suspension. I mean, some of them are getting kind of bad. So I think for a city, it's great for a council to see it, but it's also the citizens we So I think for a city, it's great for a council to see it, but it's also the citizens, residents we serve to know that, that, that is a challenge for us. And some, and some of the stuff that we're doing as far as widening the trestle and doing two lanes underneath there and doing that road and resyncing the lights, there's been a recent, by the way, there's been a recent light issue there. I don't know what's going on there, but there's been a couple of people talking about that. But anyway, kudos to staff and, and what, where we're at. I think it's great. I, I, just offhand, I'd just like to see us do like the residential areas that are having some of the issues up at the upper right corner and then move on from there. But any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Business item number 11, discussion of expiration of school zone traffic safety cameras. Chief Myers.
Good evening, council. As a follow-up to the June 18th discussion that we had on school zone speed safety cameras, Jared Hill and I addressed council's questions in a staff report. And tonight, we've asked a neighboring subject matter expert to come give council a high level picture of how speed enforcement cameras are working in Kenmore. After that, if council has questions about Kenmore's program or about camera programs for Woodinville, we'll do our best to answer those. As a reminder, the purpose of this discussion is to provide council with information to guide your decision when cameras are included in a budget later this year. So Tobin Bennett-Gold is a traffic engineer for the city of Kenmore, where he's worked since 2018. Tobin, prior to that, Tobin worked for three years as a traffic safety engineer in Pima County, Arizona, where he got to see an example of an unsuccessful traffic camera program. For the city of Kenmore, Tobin has been, has managed the implementation of CAPE, which is Kenmore's automated photo enforcement program. And really, he's an advocate for regional improvements in traffic safety and has been a knowledgeable resource for us in our learning about photo enforcement. So thank you for joining us, Tobin.
Hi, good evening, council. Thanks for having me. I feel privileged to be able to talk to you about this tonight. I am the city traffic engineer for Kenmore, but I'm not here to represent Kenmore tonight. I'm here to volunteer myself as a, an advocate and subject matter expert because I, I, I care about this. I'm, I'm in this job because I think what I'm able to do as a traffic engineer is important and I want to help share areas where we've been successful in Kenmore and areas where I think we have an opportunity to be successful as a region and help us all keep our, our roads safer together. Let me see. Okay, there we go. So just a little bit about myself. Chief, Chief Myers gave me a pretty good introduction, but just some background about where I'm coming from. I, I have a bachelor's in civil engineering and my master's is actually in data analytics. I am a licensed professional engineer and a certified professional traffic operations engineer. I have been in the public sector doing traffic and transportation engineering for 12 years. 10 of those years have been specifically in areas at touch on traffic safety. Of course, I am the city traffic engineer for Kenmore, have been for six years. And before that, like, like Chief Myers was saying, I worked in Pima County where I had the mixed blessing of, of watching a photo enforcement program fail. Photo enforcement is a really important tool, not only to provide safety, but important to be used responsibly. And it brings safety and it brings revenue and there's really, it's hard to find an argument against it because those are two great things. But the thing is, if you build a program that doesn't solicit public buy-in, then that program will fail because you will lose permission to have that program. That's what happened in Arizona. It happened in Tucson, Pima County. It happened statewide. This is something that, that we lost as a tool in our toolbox in Pima County when I was younger in my career in traffic safety. And it's something that is not local to Arizona because photo enforcement programs in our region have failed as well. So in order to create a program that solicits the buy-in of the public, at Kenmore, we talk about our foundational values for our CAPE program, our Kenmore Automated Photo Enforcement Program. That is that the program has to be safe, fair, equitable, and transparent. Safe, meaning that our photo enforcement has to have a net positive safety value. There are ways to use photo enforcement that don't provide a net safety value and that is something that we, we stay away from that. And additionally, the revenue that is generated by our photo enforcement program is then rededicated to investing in safety in our community. So we provide safety at the locations where the photo enforcement is implemented and we also provide more safety citywide by using that revenue to invest in other areas. Our program is fair. We don't want a gotcha system. We want to give everyone a chance to avoid a violation. We have a very, very low rate of violations with our, our system in Kenmore, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, but I think that is demonstrating that we've been successful in creating a fair system. It's also fair because we don't just jump straight to photo enforcement. You know, we do the hard engineering work to build roads where the speed of travel that is consistent with the speed limit is reinforced by roadway design. Sometimes we cannot get the speed of travel that we want to see through engineering interventions alone, and that is where photo enforcement comes in. Or generally enforcement as a tool in our toolbox is, is an area that we want to rely on, whether it's in-person enforcement or photo enforcement. As a tool of last resort, we would really like to build roads where people voluntarily comply with the speed limit because it is the speed that feels appropriate with the roadway. We want our program to be equitable. We do not want to disproportionately impact disadvantaged groups. We want to make sure that when we do impact folks who, who may be financially vulnerable, that we are making sure that our program is still a low burden for even those, those folks. That comes from part of our program policy, but it also comes from some policies that we've been fortunate have been implemented by our court system, too. So with Kenmore, we're with King County District Courts. And so some of the policies I talk about may be the responsibility King County District Courts. And also some recent changes in traffic laws have also changed the way low, low income violators are, are impacted by fines as well. First-time offenders, for example, with the March law that came into effect now have a 50% reduced fine on their first offense. It's also important to us that our program be transparent. Typical, the standard practice regionally has been a 30-day warning period. We do a 60-day warning period in Kenmore. You need time to, you know, commit the violation, have the violation processed. It gets mailed to you and by the time all that happens, if you got your violation towards the end of the warning period, you may not still be in the warning period by time you're encountering that area again. So I think this is the way that the warning period is, is the most powerful tool we have to reach the people who are actually using our roads and the people who will be affected by this program. So you can send out mailers, postcards, social media. If you want to reach the person who's going to be impacted by your program, they're the person speeding on the road right now. So when they get that warning in the mail, that's how they're going to know that this is what's going to happen in the future and give them the chance to change their behavior before there's a, a fine tied to that violation. We also have all of our documentation public facing. Anything about our program, you can look up. You can look up our enforcement threshold. It's 26 miles per hour. It's right there on our website. All of our council discussions are linked on our website about photo enforcement to see how we're making decisions about this program. Our program policies are linked on our website and they're also right there in our municipal code. So we really want to make sure that everybody has every chance to know anything they want to know about our program. We've got our frequently asked questions. We have our first annual report coming out next month about the performance of our program in 2023, and that's going to be something that's coming out every year as well. So I want to talk about when you're actually a driver on the road, how do we make this feel fair to you? Because again, I talked about, we don't want to have a gotcha system. We don't want you to be surprised by that camera flash. We want you to know that you're speeding, knowing that you're entering an enforcement zone, knowing what the speed limit is here, and then have every opportunity to self-correct before, before you've, you've committed a school zone violation or a regulatory speed violation. So we start with our driver is first going to encounter an advanced warning sign, photo enforcement ahead. These are not required by the RCW. These are above and beyond something that we do in Kenmore to make sure that we're really letting people know that they're entering an enforcement area. After that, you'll have a speed feedback sign. We have speed feedback signs outside of all of our enforcement zones and we always will. These are for our school zones and when, if we explore programs in the future for non-school zone photo enforcement, those will have speed feedback signs as well. Our speed feedback sign is where we're going to have the regulatory photo enforcement sign to let people know that the speed limit is enforced by photo enforcement, that regulatory sign is required by the RCW. The speed feedback sign is not. Our speed feedback signs right here are signed for the regulatory speed limit, but if they're in, in advance of a school zone, we have that number programmed to flash based on our school zone schedule. So if the school zone is not active, it will alert you that you're traveling faster than 30 miles per hour, for example, here. If the upstream, sorry, if the downstream speed limit is 20 miles per hour because the school zone is in effect, then that sign will be flashing slow down at you if you're exceeding 20 miles per hour. So we have those tuned to whatever the speed limit is, depending on whether or not the downstream school zone is active or not. After you've had your speed, speed shown to you, then you will be presented with a school zone flasher. Our school zone flashers will be flashing whenever the school zone is active. We only enforce when the flashers are active. We don't do photo enforcement for when children are present plaques. We only have that conspicuous and unmistakable indication that our school zone is active. And again, because this is a speed limit that can be photo enforced, we also add an additional regulatory photo enforcement plaque on our school zone flasher there as well. So after you've passed a school zone flasher, then you'll enter the enforcement zone. The camera is actually just in advance of the school zone, but the area the camera is looking at is within the school zone. And I'm going to show you why that's important right here. So this is taken from our, our own system right here. And the reason we have it set up like this is because when our officers are reviewing this violation and when this photo is mailed to people, it's very clear to people that they are in the school zone, that the flasher is active. And, and yeah, so this person is going 38 miles per hour in the school zone while it's active. And you can see some of our, our bike to school commuters over there across the street. So we do get heavy traffic of school zone commuters in the school zones where we do these. So being able to have the camera capture the school zone flasher as well as the speeding vehicle really cements that there was a violation here and that people had every opportunity to know what the speed limit was.
Mr. Bennett, we have a question. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Yeah, I've seen firsthand the impact of these. So I, we have kids that go to Inglemore High School. So going up Simons Road. I wanted to know, how do you incorporate the, the beacon flashing for the crosswalk as well into this? And, and how does that impact things? Because I know when those were installed, it really helped alert people, not only are you in a school zone and we're going to enforce it, but also there are kids in this crosswalk, which I know there's been a lot of close calls there. So I would love it if you could speak to how that fits into your, the previous slide where you were showing all of the warnings that you're giving before that camera goes off.
Oh, absolutely. So at the Inglemore High School location, for example, we have several crosswalks. School zones, per the RCW, are allowed to be signed within 300 feet of a school zone crosswalk, which actually makes Inglemore one of our longest school zones because we kind of have overlapping school zones as you cross crosswalk after crosswalk after crosswalk. First at the, the flashing pedestrian beacon for the crosswalk near 88th Avenue, and then again at the signal at 155th Street, and then another one at 157th Street. So the timing for the flashing school zone beacons is completely time of day based. And our policy in Kenmore is that our flashing beacons start 75 minutes before the start of classes and continue until 15 minutes after classes start. And then they begin again 15 minutes before release and go until 75 minutes after classes end. So it's three hours twice a day. And that's completely time-based regardless of whether the crosswalk is in use or not. The flashing beacons on the crosswalk are, are actuated, they're push-button actuated. So they become active as soon as someone indicates with the button that they're going to cross. And those systems are, are completely insulated from one another. So it is the presence of the crosswalks that allows us to sign the school zone, but the flashing beacons and the flashing crosswalks are separate systems.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to hearing what the impact is because I noticed a huge difference once the camera stuff went in. I mean, just incredible difference in terms of people speeding over that hill and just zooming down at like 50 miles an hour. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, a quick question. So this is during the school time and it's 20, but if it's 30, like the demo that you did, is it still capturing if somebody's doing 35 after, after school or?
Right. So the speed limit on 73rd Avenue, which is what we're looking at here, is actually 30 miles per hour. But when the school zone flashers are on through the school zone, which means past this sign that we're looking at, the speed limit there is 20 miles per hour. So before and after the school zone, the speed limit is 30. Within the school zone, while it's active, the speed limit is 20. The way our system is working right now is that it is only enforcing that 20 mile per hour speed limit when the school zone is active. And at other hours of the day, photo enforcement is not happening. Kenmore is moving, this is a, a discussion we had with our own council just last month, but we are moving to continuous enforcement where when it is outside of school zone hours, they will be enforcing that 30 mile per hour speed limit. So photo enforcement, starting next year, will be continuously active here, but it's the speed limit that will change based on the time of day and the day a week.
So have you ever thought about the first, the first time through, instead of the two months, the first time through, get a warning? Because a lot of people don't drive that route all the time, but when they do, yeah, they get, they get that. And I, I think I'm included, but I know lots of people that have been tagged on 124th and it doesn't seem fair, the way that one worked. But have you ever thought about the first time given the warning? Is there a way to do that?
So that, that does seem to be the rationale between the, the RCW that came out in, in March, baking in that extra forgiveness for, for people for whom the, the fine would be burdensome for that first time offense. When we implemented our program, that, that is not an avenue we explored. The 30-day warning period was where we started from based on regional precedent. And then we expanded on that and decided that, that in Kenmore, the, the 60-day warning period makes sense. But we did not look into the, the feasibility or desirability of having a, a first time warning system rather than a first several months warning system.
Could, could you do that?
That would be a question for the vendor, for the contractor that, that does the processing for the photo enforcement.
Okay.
I, I do not think there are requirements in the RCW for a warning period of any sort. So I, I'd have to verify that. The laws changed a lot recently, so I'd have to look that up. But I believe at least that used to be the case.
Yeah, it's not about making people angry. It's not about collecting fines. It's about changing behavior. And if they, you know, the first time through, I, I think kind of the warning is appropriate, then, then that would be more acceptable, I think, in the school zones and, and areas that people drive infrequently. And then there was, there, there was something else. I'll, I'll ask you later.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Thank you. What is Kenmore's process for identifying when a site is suitable for cameras? Do you do speed studies? Do you check collision data? Do you look at time of day? What is your process for identifying these sites?
Yes, all of the above. And I can talk a little bit more about site selection later, but to give you a quick answer, we do extensive speed studies and, and we also look at the crash history and not just what the, the travel speeds are, but the, the number of people who are going high speeds as well.
And with these traffic cameras, do you have any instances in Kenmore where you go from, let's say, a 40 mile an hour zone to a 25 mile an hour zone? And if you do, what are some of the things that you've done to make sure that people aren't having to really stomp on the brakes and sort of cause a pileup behind them in advance of that ticketing area?
So one of the difficult things about school zones is that you cannot design a school zone to make sense for 20 miles per hour because it has to make sense at the 25 or 30 or 35 mile per hour speed limit the rest of the day. So engineering solutions in school zones are, are really difficult in that regard beyond these, these, these signs that, that attract driver attention. So I, I think it's the nature of school zones that you're frequently So I think it's the nature of school zones that you're frequently going to have that case where people are permitted to go 35 in one area, and then they encounter an area where they do have to dramatically reduce their speed. What we look at when we have a speed reduction of any sort, whether it's school zone or a speed limit reduction, is we're going to look at the perception-reaction times of drivers, the distance that they can see signs, the time that it takes to reduce the speed of a vehicle comfortably. And all that can give us up a distance that a driver can reasonably travel, decide to reduce their speed after receiving the cues, and comfortably reduce the speed of their vehicle in order to be consistent with the speed limit at that point where the new speed limit comes into effect. So that is something that we look at with our school zones. It's something that we look very carefully at when we have our photo enforcement programs because the stakes go up, right? But yeah, so we do want to make sure that people are able to perceive, react, and reduce their speed in a comfortable distance and time.
And then just one more question. With the speed cameras that you have, are they generally concentrated around public schools or are they around private schools? Or do you not differentiate and put them everywhere?
So our photo enforcement zones are at public schools right now. We have one at Arrowhead Elementary and one at Kenmore Elementary as well. And we do have one going in next year at Inglemore High School. So at this point, we haven't had private schools rise to the top of our list for areas to prioritize for photo enforcement. I do believe that they would be eligible, per the RCW requirements, to be considered areas where you can implement school zones, just the same as public schools. So they don't have to be cut out of your analysis, they just haven't risen to the top of the schools that we're looking at in Kenmore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to talk about who's receiving the fines because we care about that a lot. The fines skew towards higher-income earners. Most of our fines hit folks who are driving personal vehicles. And personal vehicle as a mode of travel skews towards higher-income earners. Folks who are lower-income earners, they are overrepresented in active modes such as walking, cycling, as well as transit use. And when you look at personal vehicle usership, we have higher-income earners who are overrepresented there. So from the very start, we knew that because of the mix of folks that are using our roads and because we would be expecting that most of the people receiving these fines would be personal vehicle drivers, that we had something that would not be skewed towards impacting the people who are most vulnerable to financial disruption. So that's something that we looked at when we implemented our program initially. The fines largely go to first-time offenders. So 88% of our drivers never receive a second fine. We have, I think, maybe 8% of drivers receive a second fine and fewer than 3% of people receive three or more fines. So we do see a very low rate of recidivism here. Now, granted, we've had one year in Kenmore of normal operations, so I have to add that so far. People who may receive one fine per year may be counted as one fine right here, just as a caveat. The folks in Kenmore who receive fines, about 20% of them are Kenmore residents. I think this is something that is really important to think about right now here in this region. When I came from Arizona, we have, if you're driving on Tucson roads, you live in Tucson because it's a big-city model. Out here, where we have this honeycomb of small municipalities, we share our road users a lot. So we're going to have Woodenville residents getting tickets in Kenmore, Kenmore residents getting tickets in Woodenville. And I think when we implemented our program, we had a pretty easy time of it because if 80% of the people impacted by our program are not Kenmore residents, then in a way, they don't have representation on our councils, so we're making decisions without them. However, because we need to create programs that solicit public buy-in and because we need the permission of our residents and road users in order to have a program like this, I think with photo enforcement becoming something that's being explored by a lot of municipalities that don't have programs right now, and also explored for expansion by municipalities with mature programs, a lot of this appetite is based on the revisions to photo enforcement programs that came out in March. I think we're going to see a lot more photo enforcement in the region. And if we have programs that are viewed by our road users as exploitative, I think that could turn sentiment against our programs regionally, not just locally but regionally. Because we may have people developing a distaste for Kenmore's program because of what their experience was in Seattle or Bellevue or Richmond.
Councilmember Edwards has a question.
Yeah, the 88% in fact is interesting. I have a question about that. From what I understand, you stated that for two months, you offered a warning period where they receive a citation that was just a warning in the mail. I'm trying to understand, did you have any data regarding the amount of people who received that warning and then received a fine later on? I'm just trying to understand if there's a difference between just something coming in the mail was enough to deter it, or if it was the actual fine that actually deterred people from committing again?
You know, that's a great question, and I don't have a particular answer to that. I have some things that can kind of speak around it. For example, I know that our rate of violation dropped precipitously as soon as the cameras started flashing and before anyone had a chance to get anything in the mail. So even just right before our first warnings had been mailed, already we were seeing a drop. And that didn't just come from signing because our signing was installed well in advance of our cameras being turned on. So our signing made almost no difference. And actually, I think that might be my next slide. But yeah, so I think people are motivated by several factors associated with our program. But I do not have a number. When I pulled this out, what I did is I queried violations, and those are queried separate from warnings. But that's an interesting question, and I might look that up. So one caveat I want to say is that the folks who are going to receive tickets are going to be the folks who are using the road. So in Kenmore, we have our enforcement on collector roads and arterial roads, and those roads tend to have a more regional mix. If you're doing these on lower-volume roads, lower-functional classification roads, the folks who are getting those tickets are much more likely to reflect local land uses and local demographics. So there are stipulations in the RCW about giving this due attention, about making sure that when you're, if an area you want to implement photo enforcement is in a low-income neighborhood, that there are additional requirements for your program to make sure that you're not being burdensome on a specific community that's vulnerable to that. And this is also something that speaks to our 20% of drivers being Kenmore residents. That would be very different if we were installing these cameras on the local access roads. Then we'd probably see a very high percentage of Kenmore residents and the share of folks who are receiving tickets from this. So when you want to know who's going to be receiving the tickets, you need to look at who's going to be using that road. So these are our two inaugural school zones that we launched our photo enforcement program with, and we have pretty good data on how they're performing right now. And I just want to walk you through that because I'm a little bit of a proud Papa about this. I'm really proud of how we've done here. Our violation rate on Wanted Drive near Arrowhead Elementary, we had 99% of drivers traveling six miles per hour or more over the school zone speed limits. That's 26 and above. 99% of drivers, when the school zone was active, were traveling at that threshold or above. After photo enforcement was implemented, we reached a steady state of about 1.3% of drivers exceeding the school zone speed limit by six miles per hour or more. I'm saying six miles per hour or more because we have that little bit of grace right there. You know, we're not looking for you to calibrate your speedometer with our school zones. We find that that six-mile-per-hour threshold, we're very comfortable with that, and that's what we're using for our metric here.
Councilmember Beth Campbell has a question.
I do. So you're talking about these speed cameras at school locations. Do you have any data of these cameras near parks? We talked about previously putting a camera by one of our local parks and doing speed monitoring that way. Do you have any examples of that in this presentation, or is this some data that you have elsewhere?
So park speed zones are something that's been legally permitted in Washington for a few years now, and I think they're getting more attention with the revised RCW that came out recently. But I did look to see if other folks have implemented that, and I haven't encountered other cities that have done a park speed zone. We have looked at park speed zones as a possibility in Kenmore, but we found that most of our parks were areas where we either had an opportunity for a different type of photo enforcement program that was less restricted than the rules for park speed zones, or the parks that we were looking at didn't have speeding issues that rose to the top of areas that we needed to prioritize. So I've looked into that a little bit, but it's not something that I've experienced with Kenmore's program.
Thank you.
So in the Wanted Drive, the Arrowhead Elementary school zone, before photo enforcement, we had a mean speed, so that's the average speed, of 37 miles per hour when the school zone was active. This is on a road with a 30 mile-per-hour speed limit. Afterwards, after photo enforcement, our mean speed when the school zone is active just hit right there at 20 miles per hour. I'm very happy with that. So the biggest reason to do speed enforcement is crash risk reduction. Crash risk is something that speed contributes to tremendously, and the speed reduction we're seeing here reduces our risk of crashes occurring when the photo enforcement is active by 46%, reduces the risk of crash injury by 71%, and reduces the risk of fatal crashes by 90%. So this large change in travel speeds during the school zones has had a dramatic change in our risk of fatal crashes occurring in the school zone.
Deputy Mayor Reynolds.
Can you drill into the counts on those crash reductions? That'd be helpful.
So this is crash risk reduction, which is based on studies linking the rate of crashes based on how fast people are going, holding other environmental features constant. So this is not a 46% reduction in crashes that have occurred. When we look at crashes as a metric to evaluate our school zones, it's very difficult to do that with rigor because our school zones are active for three hours a day, 200 days a year, and they're about 600 feet long, which means that we have a very small time-space capture area for crashes to occur. So this is something that I'll talk a little bit more about with our site selection. But when we're looking at our school zone crashes, what we want to do, because we have that high concentration of vulnerable road users, we don't want to tolerate that first bad crash ever happening. So when I'm talking about a 90% reduction in fatal crash risk, that is a 90% reduction in the chance that a fatal crash will occur, but it doesn't mean that we've gone from 10 fatal crashes to one.
So this is non-specific data. This is more an extrapolation of general crash data.
Right, right. This is the effect that this change in speed has on the risk of crashes occurring. On our 73rd Avenue school zone, we had a violation rate of 87% before photo enforcement, and we've seen that drop to 1.8%. So again, that's a precipitous reduction in our rate of violations. Our mean speed was 30 miles per hour, and we've seen that drop to 21 miles per hour in this Kenmore Elementary school zone. And our crash risk reduction, based on that speed reduction, is a 73% reduction in fatal crash risk. Now, I want to call some attention to this, is that regionally, what's typical to see is a 60% to 70% reduction in violations. I think Kenmore's program is unique in that we provide an abundance of signing that facilitates driver awareness and that last chance to self-correct before you enter that. And those people deciding, after given that information, deciding to adjust their speed voluntarily, I think that is reflected in our very dramatic reduction in violations compared to what we see regionally.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Thank you. So with regards to the ticketing that you have seen here, are there specific upgrades, safety measures that you've taken? For example, for upgraded crosswalks, safer sidewalks in these areas that the city has put onto a capital budget?
Right, so the first thing that we've done with this funding is, of course, pay for program expenses, but then we've also taken that funding beyond program expenses and used it to apply these enhanced treatments to our school zones where we may have photo enforcement in the future, increasing the number of flashers that we have in other school zones. These flashers, we made sure were already in place before photo enforcement went into effect, but we did leverage this funding to provide enhancements to other school zones that are not benefiting from the photo enforcement safety, from the safety that photo enforcement brings to a school zone. So we've leveraged this funding to provide safety to other school zones. Pardon me stumbling over my words. And speed feedback signs and other enhanced signing in those areas. But these school zones, we got them as best we could before putting in photo enforcement. And again, that goes back to using photo enforcement as a last resort. So if there were improvements that could have been made in these school zones other than photo enforcement in order to improve safety and improve compliance, those are things that we would prioritize getting in place before we decide that we want to move to photo enforcement for that school zone. And we have some school zones in Kenmore that do look like good candidates for photo enforcement, but where we've ruled them out because we still have work to do there to try to get compliance in line before moving on to photo enforcement as our measure of last resort for getting folks to be compliant with the school zone speed limit.
So could you speak a little bit more to the type of improvements that you would implement prior to putting in some of these cameras? Would it be improving sidewalks? Would it be improving visibility? What are some things that you have done?
So some of the locations where we are not doing photo enforcement right now or we have more work to do, one of the things that opens up our toolbox for those locations is that they are in streets with lower speed limits. These two streets right here have 30 mile-per-hour speed limits, but near Kenmore Middle School, for example, we have a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, and we think that would make it suitable for raised crosswalks, for example. Other school zones may also benefit from just bringing our school zone signing treatments up to the standard that we hold for our photo enforcement areas. So giving those speed feedback signs, putting in, you know, the school zone flashers in order to, you know, even stopping short of photo enforcement, but providing those improvements, we think could help improve compliance. Something that we call airtiding our school zones, making sure that our side streets also have school zone flashers and signings so that you can't enter the school zone from a side street without knowing the flashers are on. So those are the sorts of improvements that come to mind off the top of my head. We do prioritize our walk-to-school routes for sidewalks. That's a separate program than what we've paired with our photo enforcement funding. But yeah, so yeah, okay. I think that's what comes to mind.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arndt.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for this data, and it seems like you have some pretty dramatic results from this enforcement, but I do appreciate that enforcement is the last tool. Do you have data to show what, if any, speed reductions, those sort of treatments that you were just mentioning might have caused prior to implementing the photo enforcement?
Let's see, for our speed feedback signs, we generally see like a 1 to 3 mile-per-hour reduction in mean speed. We haven't done a study on the effectiveness of our speed feedback signs specifically with the time-of-day school zone speeds, but that's the kind of effect that we expect to see generally. We, I don't think I have other examples off the top of my head of areas where we've done rigorous study. We have, sometimes we have the opportunity to really get good data on this stuff, and sometimes we do the best we can to improve it, knowing that we're not going to be able to hold it to a rigorous study that... to hold it to a rigor of study that we would want to use to infer the effectiveness of these treatments, if that makes sense. For example, I'll say at this wanted to drive in Arrowhead, this wanted to drive, the Arrowhead Elementary School Zone, we have a grid smart camera there at our intersection which allows us to collect the speed of, the speed and timestamp of every vehicle that passes through the intersection 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So we have very high confidence in the data that we've collected there, and we have day by day, month by month data there. For the Kenmore Elementary School Zone, we have no grid smart camera, no signalized intersection there to help us with the data collection, and we're limited there to seven day studies where we put out radars that measure the speed of vehicles in the school zone, but that's not something we can do all year round. We have other school zones where it's difficult to do a good radar study, and so we try to do our best standard of practice there, but it's difficult for us to follow up and know with confidence what the magnitude of the effect was.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randall.
Yeah, I have a question to complement some of the questions from Councilmember Art, and I figured you might know these as a traffic engineer, and that is a comparison between what it looks like when we do smart road design versus the actual cameras. And is there a way to infer, does road design have the same effectiveness as a camera or different, or what's been your take, or what have you read?
Well, roadway design is much more difficult, and that's one of the reasons we don't want to use photo enforcement as an excuse to not also be good engineers. That said, roadway design can sometimes be, if you have a target speed, if you want to have a road where a 25 mile per hour speed limit feels like the appropriate speed of travel to motorists, and you may want that because you have a high volume of multimodal users, it could be because you have complex traffic environments, but the changes that it takes to get there, in some cases, may be prohibitively expensive. One very tricky thing to deal with is roadway grade. If it's steep enough, people will drive 10 miles per hour because they're scared, right? But if you have like a 10% grade, it's very difficult to fight that downhill, you know? It's also difficult to fight the uphill because your foot is already on the gas pedal. So there are areas where roadway design is very cost effective, and there are areas where roadway design is, no pun intended, an uphill battle in order to create an environment that facilitates compliance with the speed limit that you've determined is appropriate for that environment. So given an unlimited budget, I think we could fix all the roads without needing photo enforcement, but if we know what this road needs, is it a $50 million rebuild in order to get people to comply with that 25 mile per hour speed limit, then I would say that's infeasible, and at that point, I would consider photo enforcement, even though there are cost prohibitive roadway design options that may still be on the table.
Got it, and I was going to ask about the how much, but it looks like your next step is revenue, so I'll wait till we get to that section.
Councilmember Taylor.
The question I was thinking about with the data, when you set something up like that, so the car, a lot of nav systems now will squawk at you when you're entering a school zone, they'll basically announce school zone, and even if you're not navigating, they'll tell you, and it'll also tell you if you're in a photo enforced area. Is this something that you do when you do the setup? Do you communicate with some of the big nav?
No, so we have explored relationships with companies like Waze, for example. We've talked to them a few times. Where we've landed as a city is at their data sharing agreement, binded the city in ways that weren't acceptable to us, and we ended up not pursuing a partnership like that. I think a lot of this is crowdsourced data. I think it's either vehicles that are out there looking for things like this, like how Google uses their Street View Cars, or folks reporting school zones and photo enforcement areas. We don't have something set up as a direct channel to let them know about that ourselves. Sometimes when I see something on Google Maps that's wrong, I will, as a courtesy, I'll email them to let them know.
Yeah, I've noticed some schools don't have it, and others do, and I was just wondering if that's something you can do in the setup, because it's a nice feature, you know, school zone and photo enforcement, and then you're aware.
Yeah, setting up that data sharing hasn't been something we've been able to land at the city. So like I was saying, we have really great data at this intersection, at the school zone, because we have 24-hour-a-day data collection there. So this is our timeline for 2023, and these are our school zone volumes, just so that, you know, as context, you know how many people are traveling through our school zones. This is, of course, we were still on the tail end of traffic volume recovery from the pandemic, so you'll see, we have seen those volumes increase since the beginning of 2023. When we had that signing up before the cameras were active, oh, our school zone volumes, by the way, are about 25% of our daily traffic at this school zone. So of all the cars that travel through this school zone in a day, on a school day, about 25% of those cars travel through the school zone when it's active. For the whole year, when you're factoring in weekends and summer, it's only about 10% of our annual traffic travels through the school zones when it's active. So when only our signing was up, we saw no change in speed behavior. The photo enforcement ahead signing, the speed feedback sign here, I guess there's an answer to your question. The speed feedback sign did not engender a noticeable change in compliance with the school zone speed limit. Once enforcement went into effect, during our warning period at this location, we started out with nearly 100 infractions a day, notices of infractions, warnings actually were sent out, I just named the row the same thing, but about 100 warnings were mailed out a day, and we saw that drop precipitously very quickly. So even that 100 warnings mailed a day, remember, is a drop off from 99%. So we saw 4.4% of drivers receive warnings during that first month that the school zone was active, and that's down from 99% of folks who were exceeding that threshold where they would have received warnings. So again, once that camera started flashing, we saw people's behavior change immediately. We saw that cut in half by time actual fines were attached to the violation, and we've seen it cut in half again by the end of 2023. So starting out with that 4.4% of violations, all the way down to what we're seeing today is our 1.3% of people traveling through our school zones, down from 99%, are violating that school zone speed limit by 6 miles per hour or more. So this court data is no longer specific to the school zone because all of our photo enforcement infractions go in the same bucket. So this is across our 73rd and our Juanita School Zones, just to be upfront about that. What we saw initially was about 6.5% of our tickets were dismissed by the courts. Now, there are a few reasons that the tickets can be dismissed, three big reasons. One, they can be dismissed when you fill out a declaration of nonresponsibility. This is a form that is mailed with your photo enforcement ticket, where you can sign on the line and say, I wasn't the one driving this car. In Washington, we don't capture faces, that's the law on photo enforcement, we only capture license plates. So if you lent your car to your buddy that day, and you got a photo enforcement ticket in the mail, and you send off a letter and you say, that wasn't me, then you're off the hook. That's all it takes for that process. That's one way our tickets can get dismissed. Another way is there can be a judgment by a judge of reduced judgment, I guess is what they call it, where they say that you can pay a reduced amount, or you can pay nothing. So it can be reduced for financial hardship. That's one way that our ticket can be dismissed. The other way that our ticket can be dismissed is if someone challenges our program, someone says, there's something about your program that's illegal, or I got this ticket, but it shows the flashers weren't on, it was a police error, or something like that, something about our program is wrong. Our program hasn't been challenged. We haven't had any tickets dismissed because our program was challenged. That's something that would have come to the attention of our prosecutor, and it hasn't. So our tickets have only been thrown out for declaration of nonresponsibility and for financial hardship. That DNR, dismissed for DNR, we saw that at about 1% of all of our tickets when we mailed them out, about 1% in that first month when there were fines attached, about 1% were dismissed because of that DNR, because of filling that form out and mailing it in, which means that those other dismissals, that 5.6% that's remaining by subtraction, those were probably reduced because of financial hardship. However, as our program has matured, we have seen those flip flop. In December of 2023, we saw only 0.2% of our tickets dismissed for cause of financial hardship. This is good news for me. I don't want to see our tickets being thrown out because we're hitting people who can't afford to pay. We are seeing more people realize or become acquainted with that process of getting their ticket dismissed through that declaration of nonresponsibility, and that's holding steady at about 5% here. So right off the top of the tickets that we send out, we expect about 5% of them to just come back with a DNR. That was a question I had, I couldn't find the answer to it before our program, so now I'm telling everyone. Of the tickets that don't get dismissed, what we see is about 30% of our fines not paid in full. This could be people who have financial hardship but have not sought reduced judgment. It could also be people who just take that fine and throw it in the trash. So we don't have a story about where this 30% goes, but we know 30% of our tickets never come back to us. Of the people who do not get their ticket dismissed by financial hardship, we see about 3% of those go to collections. This, by the way, I don't know if 3% is a lot or a little, so I asked the courts, and what they told me is it's less than what they see for parking fines. It's also less than what they see for other photo enforcement programs that go through the same court. So these two things, the dismissals based on financial hardship and those fines and collections, that's kind of, that's how we're keeping our finger on the pulse of how are we affecting people who are not in a position to pay these tickets. So when you take our $100 ticket, which by the way is the lowest fine in the region, and we did that because we want to minimize the impact that we have on people for whom $100 is a lot of money, we want to make sure that we're not causing financial disruption. So we went as low as we could on that fine while still expecting it to facilitate attention to our speed limits. So after you take out the fees from the courts and after you account for the tickets that never come back to us, we have about $60 retained per ticket that gets mailed out. So here's that again, that's $60, about $11 of court expenses, gives us a net remittance of about $89. You take off 30%, you get approximately $60. Our program expenses are about $7,500 per month, per location. That's two cameras per location. Those two cameras add up to 38.50 a month per camera, but there's always two cameras at our locations, so $7,500 a month. The cost of police review so far has fit in the margins. We do police review on the overnight shifts, we do it when it's slow, we do it when the officers don't have other duties that they're attending to. I've seen police review happen during council meetings. So if you look at how much our program costs and you look at how much we're getting left over per ticket, you need about eight infractions per school day to have that program be self-sustaining. When you move to continuous enforcement for those, if you're doing the enforcement like Kenmore is moving to, of the regulatory speed limit outside of school zone hours, then you need fewer per day because you have more days in a year, right? So then we would be looking at five infractions per day for a self-sustaining program. In Kenmore, what we ended up with is approximately 15 infractions per day on 73rd and about 30 infractions per day on Wanted to Drive. After program expenses in our first year, we expect that's going to come out to about $400,000 of revenue retained by the city after program expenses. With the expansion of our program, that's adding in an additional school zone and moving to continuous enforcement, that is going to be a dramatic increase in the amount of traffic. Again, our school zones are about 10% of our traffic per year, travel through that active school zone, and this would be moving to our program affecting 100% of traffic. That means a lot more people are affected, but it also means that our safety benefit is extended to a lot more people. So how have we spent that so far? Well, it's absorbed the staff cross for program, operation and evaluation, all the work I do to figure out where we should do photo enforcement in the future, working with our courts, working with our city outreach. I spent close to, between a quarter and a third of my time as a Kenmore staff on this program in our first year. It's going to be less in the future, but that time has been offloaded to the revenue that our program is generating. It's also absorbed other traffic safety related staff costs. So one of the things that I appreciate about this program is we're often, without photo enforcement, put in the position of we have finite resources, do we want to provide safety, or do we want to invest in other city services? And our photo enforcement program has moved us from the safety or into a position where we can do safety and. And so as the person responsible for implementing traffic safety in Kenmore, I really appreciate not having to compete with those other services. I know that funding for the safety projects I want to deliver has been secured by our photo enforcement program. We've also spent this money on school zone improvements at current and planned photo enforcement locations, as well as other school zones actually, which may or may not receive photo enforcement in the future. And what's left over from that, we've banked for larger investments citywide. $400,000 is a lot of money when you're buying signs and flashing lights, it's a small amount of money when you're buying roundabouts. How will this future revenue be spent? So the RCW changes that happened in March restricted programs to only dedicate their funding, their revenue after expenses, to traffic safety. This was not the case before. It has always been the case for Kenmore. I told our council that this was a case of Washington catching up with Kenmore, that's another thing that I'm proud of. But from this point onward, all of our revenue is legally required to be dedicated to safety expenses. What that's going to look like is earmarking $100 million a year for traffic safety spot improvements, location projects, $1 million a year for pavement preservation and systemic safety, and that pavement preservation may look like an odd one out, but pavement preservation has been a fantastic vehicle for delivering systemic safety to our city. When we repave our roads and even when we just put a sealant on our roads, it gives us an opportunity to reimagine how we're using that pavement footprint. And so our pavement preservation program ends up piggybacking a lot of safety improvements along with it. And so that's why we have that earmarked in here as our pavement preservation and systemic safety program. The costs associated with that is staff and consulting costs, also construction costs, also using it for grant matches. Additionally, we are offsetting from the general fund $800,000 of our police contract. That has a target, if revenue comes in, a target of $1.25 million to offset from the general fund for our police contracts, and that's because that's proportional to the amount of time that our police spend contributing to traffic safety. So doing traffic law enforcement, doing crash response, operating our photo enforcement program, right now, our review fits in the margins. If our program grows, that may not always be true. So site selection. We have speed enforcement for school zones and speed enforcement of the regulatory speed limit. Those can be done at the location, or they can be separated. You can have enforcement of the regulatory speed limit at locations that are not school zones. You can also have enforcement of the regulatory speed limit in school zones when the school zone's not in effect. And these programs are characteristically different in what we're looking for them to achieve. Enforcement of our active school zone, I touched on this a little bit before, but it's a proactive measure against critical crashes. We do not want to tolerate even that. We do not want to tolerate even that that first fatal school zone crash. So we are not using our photo enforcement program to treat crash history in school zones. We are using it to treat speeds that we know will be fatal if a crash occurs. And moving from that thirty-seven mile per hour mean speed down to that twenty mile per hour mean speed, that has shifted us from a circumstance where if a crash occurs, it is almost certain to be fatal, to a speed where if a crash occurs, it is almost certain to be survivable. So that is a a a black and white difference for me. It is removing essentially the probability that a fatal crash can occur in our school zones. That's what we're trying to do with our photo enforcement of the school zone speed limit. It's limited in scope, however. Our school zones account for twenty-five percent of our daily traffic, but annually only about ten percent of our traffic. Again, they're only, and and Kenmore, three hours a day, about two hundred days a year. So the scope of the safety benefit we provide with our enforcement of the school zone speed limit is limited in how much of the the time, space, traffic environment it can provide that safety benefit to. The regulatory speed limit, however, is what is going to move the needle in terms of crash history. If you have a high crash location, if speed is contributing to those crashes, applying this safety intervention widely to affect everyone traveling in that environment, that is what is going to have a substantial and measurable reduction in your crash history year over year. Lower speeds allow you more time to react and prevent a crash. And they also, when crashes do occur, those crashes have less kinetic energy. There's less energy that gets dissipated destructively by the collision of the vehicles with each other or the collision of a vehicle with a pedestrian. Lower speeds prevent crashes and they reduce the severity of crashes that do occur. However, they are very broad in scope, and that makes it important to pay such careful attention to who we're affecting with our programs. The scope of the program is is going to increase the positives and the negatives of the program, and it's really important to pay attention to both. Even with that one percent of folks receiving tickets, one percent can still be a large number of people when you have a large number of travelers. That one percent, the 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 folks that we've seen traveling through our active school zones, the folks that have been affected by Kenmore's photo enforcement program, we just crossed one million drivers. So that one percent that we're seeing, that one point three percent, that's one point three percent of a million people who had an opportunity to get a ticket but were more likely to choose a safe speed. It still means many people were affected, but even more people benefited from the safety effect. So I really want to drill into this because I'm kind of a nerd and I want to slip my favorite equations in here. It's the closest thing we have to a natural law in traffic safety, which is that crashes are proportional to speed. The crash rate after a speed reduction is going to be proportional to the speed reduction. You cut the speed in half, you cut the crashes in half. This is a true across countries, counties, road types. It's true in school zones, it's true on arterials, it's true on interstate highways. This has been proven over fifty years, over fifty studies. It is remarkably consistent. And when you look at the severity of those crashes, the relationship is exponential. If you cut the crash, if you cut the speed in half, you will see one quarter of the crash injuries. If you cut the speed in half, you will see one sixteenth of the fatal crashes. As speed drops off, fatal crash risk drops off precipitously. This right here is what we're looking at after our school zone intervention. From a thirty-five mile per hour mean speed, we had a thirty-seven, but thirty-five is easy numbers. Reducing from a thirty-five mile per hour mean speed, which I think is fairly typical in many school zones in our region, down to a twenty mile per hour mean speed, that's an eighty-seven percent risk of fatal crashes, reduced risk of fatal crashes. When we look at enforcement of the regulatory mean speed, the speed reduction is a lot less because the speed limit is a lot higher. But because of that exponential relationship, just reducing that mean speed from thirty miles per hour, which may be five miles over the speed limit, down to thirty miles per hour in line with the speed limit, it's already close to cutting that risk of fatal crashes in half. And that can be applied to, that can be applied to every road user traveling through that environment, pedestrians, cyclists, motorists. We see the dramatic effect for the small treatment in school zones, but we still see a very remarkable effect for the more moderate speed reduction that we see when we're enforcing the regulatory speed limit. So this is what informs our site selection criteria. We have criterias and we have priorities. Criterias are things that we won't even look at a site if it doesn't meet these criterias. We want to know that the travel speeds meet the threshold for traffic calming. For Kenmore, that means that we have eighty-five, that means we have more than fifteen percent of drivers exceeding fi- five miles per hour with the speed limit. We may have an area where we have lots of violations due to the volume, but we won't explore those for traffic calming if they're still mostly well behaved. We don't want to have feasible alternatives, and in Kenmore, we also want to have a mixed-use environment. We're targeting this on our target zero priorities for for zero serious and fatal crashes for for vulnerable road users. Of those sites that meet our criteria, our priorities are looking at the highest frequency of speeding violations and also the highest frequency of correctable crashes. So we do look at the crash history, but it comes out the same. Where we see the most speeding is where we see the most crashes. And that's why we focus on the speeding, because we can collect the best data on the speeds, and the crash history can be highly variable. So I I know I've kept you for a long time. This is everything I have. I'm happy to take questions, also happy to give you your night back.
Thank you. I I really want to thank you. That was very detailed, and I appreciate you coming out, helping us with this information that's new to us, so I really appreciate it. Anybody, Deputy Mayor Randolph?
I did have one question that I hope to get into, and that was, you mentioned sometimes that officers actually do reviews of the footage. Who manages that data? How is it retrieved and how how does it manage through throughout its lifecycle?
I I would have to refer you to to our our police department. That's a bit outside of my wheelhouse as as the traffic engineer. I I do know that the laws about stewardship of that data have been changing, and and we've seen some under-the-hood changes in our photo enforcement program as a result of that and our relationship between our our police department and our contractor. But I I don't think I can speak on that specifically with with any authority.
And do you know who, can you tell us who Kenmore is currently contracted with to enable us to do some more research?
Yes, our contractor right now is Fair Mobility.
Any other questions? Councilman Evans?
So I really like the approach that you have of multiple warnings so that people do have the opportunity to self-correct. I like the opportunity to give people a sixty-day sort of grace period while they're getting used to it. And I really love the data that shows the effectiveness of actually having these sorts of fines in place. I think it's unfair to have opportunities to potentially save lives by seeing the massive reduction in the potential for a fatal crash and us not at least seriously looking at this. So I really hope that as a council that we are willing to to lean in and not wait for a horrible incident to happen, but to be proactive in and really put our efforts to making safe routes to school a priority for our community. So thank you for sharing all of this data today and all of your learning and your approach to this.
That was some of the the reasoning that that shifted us towards adopting, moving towards adopting that that twenty-four-hour continuous enforcement cycle, because we have these tools in place in our school zones and seeing how effective they are and not allowing that safety benefit to extend to the other ninety percent of the folks using our roads all year long. It it felt like withholding treatment.
Councilman Art?
I would also like to thank you for that presentation. It was exactly the level of nerdiness that I I was excited about. And I really do appreciate the equity lens that Kenmore has put onto its program, keeping its fines low, allowing financially vulnerable residents to have ways out of paying the ticket so we're not targeting the most vulnerable parts of our population. And I think you have modeled the ways that cities can do that, and as you've shown, you've not had a whole lot of pushback on that. So clearly you are, what the approach that Kenmore is taking is effective in that. I know particularly in some of those areas, you might have a higher percentage of those vulnerable populations than we would in some of our neighborhoods that we might be considering. So I do really appreciate that, and I think that your policies in place are a good model that we should consider as we continue to have this discussion.
So I had a question while you're going through the the through through your report. So you're adding them to the Inglemore school zone. So do you have any anticipation? So I, you know, I I think of the elementary schools, you have some younger walkers that we want to protect and aren't as experienced, and as a parent, you're nervous about how they're crossing roads and paying attention and, you know, as my boys would do, walk into school, goof around and, you know, chase a ball and all those kinds of things. So lowering speeds in an elementary school zone makes a lot of sense to me. But your experience, or is there experience correlated with like a high school 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 zone where perhaps you don't have as younger walkers, but you have a lot of inexperienced drivers that may tend to speed? Is there, is there an experience, safety experience with that, or can you comment on that?
So one difference between the, specifically with with the younger drivers near a high school, that that's not something I I can conjecture about with any data that we've had. Our our chief of police might be able to tell you more about what kind of tickets are are given out in that area if they are towards, you know, younger drivers or more regional traffic. But I think you you are correct that that the walking and that the walking and biking and the the active mode school commuting populations are contextually different here. And we do see, of course, younger younger kids commuting to our elementary schools, but also often accompanied by parents, and with our high schoolers, very often unaccompanied. Additionally, if you have ever driven by Inglemore during school release, there are swarms of pedestrians. It is a very dense environment, full of pedestrians using all of our crosswalk. All all three of our crosswalks in those areas heavily trafficked, as well as folks walking along our streets in order to get home. So I I feel like the the vulnerable road user groups may be different, but I think they also bring their own risks and and lack of risks with them. And and we do see crashes occur in our Inglemore school zone. It's a very long school zone, and we're asking a lot of drivers to maintain that low speed for such a long distance because we have essentially three overlapping school zones there. And we have, even in 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 recent years, seen low severity pedestrian crashes involving involving, it was summer school, actually, so it it wouldn't have been captured by our school zone. But but we do, we do see pedestrians having that demonstrated risk interacting with our motorists in that school zone.
Thank you. I I can testify that I have the dents in my pickup to to prove that the drivers are not experienced at Inglemore. So any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate you coming out, Mr. Ben. Is that the end? Is, okay. Okay. Do we need to take a break? That went pretty long. Does anybody want to take a five-minute break at this point, or we want to march on? I'll take that as the march on sign. Okay, so business item number twelve, capital improvement plan, project funding discussion, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. All right, so we're talking capital improvement plan. So the objective of tonight is to give a brief overview of where we're at in the planning process, summarizing the project list, and then having a discussion about the recommended funding allocations as seen in attachment two of the staff report. So I'll just dive right in. If it'll advance my slides. There we go. So I show this this image every time. So right now, we are at the end of the the middle box, the drafting phase. This, tonight's discussion is what allows us to put together our draft plan and put it out for that first opportunity for the public to comment on on what's in it. And in particular, what council is considering funding for the next biennium. So the the goal is for us to have at least a a general idea of what projects are going to receive funding so that we can start soliciting that feedback and then go through the process of adopting the plan come December, where it will be adopted with the the budget. So in 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 total, there were seventy-two projects on our project list, equalling about two hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. There were about twenty, twenty-two new projects, thirteen in streets, one in surface water, three in parks. And we've also removed quite a few projects that have been completed or are no longer being considered. As you saw in the staff report and in the second attachment, projects are broken into two categories, the first being nondiscretionary and the second being discretionary. So what that means is nondiscretionary projects are projects that essentially we have to do, and we have to do them for a number of reasons. Typically, it's because of a development agreement that we have already signed off on. We've already committed, right? We've already invested money, we've already rested time and resources. We have the funding, so we're going to carry it, carry it through. And then the the next being a carryover project, something that has been funded. Maybe it hasn't been started for for whatever reason, but it's funded and it's still on the docket to to be done. The second type of project is the discretionary projects. So this, these are projects that are not funded. They may be new projects for this biennium, they may be old ones. But this is really the the topic of tonight is how do we spend our money? Which projects kind of rise to the top of that list should be funded and should be scheduled for completion in the near future? CIP is funded through various sources, taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, grants, through through developers and developer agreements, flood park levies, as well as park and transportation impact fees. A few of those funding sources do have, you know, strings attached to them. For example, parks fees obviously have to be spent on parks. But when we're going through this exercise, we we take those funding sources that have strings and we allocate those out to projects first. And it's very easy to do, given the the amounts we see, especially especially in this biennium where we have a very large traffic projects, very large parks projects. And then we use the the funding sources that don't have those those strings attached to them to fund the rest of the projects. In total this year, our finance department is estimating roughly twenty-two million dollars in available revenue. And nine and a half million is necessary to make those nondiscretionary projects whole. For various reasons, they, some of them are, require more money to be funded at a hundred percent, which is our our practice, is to fund projects at a hundred percent. And so to do that, we have to take that nine point five million right off the top, which leaves us approximately thirteen point three million to then allocate towards the non, or the discretionary projects. So as we're developing the the project list, and again, as you saw in attachment one, we go through an objective ranking process to we go through an objective ranking process to, to give us a starting point of, of which projects should be considered and which shouldn't. It's not the only thing we look at, but it does kind of get us pretty close. And what we look at is impact on public safety, whether it's required by some means. Does it align with the council's strategic plan or some other guidance that council has provided previously? Synergy with other projects, meaning, is there another project happening close by where there's maybe some economies of scale, or is it less of a burden on staff to just kind of lump them together? And then urgency, which is, does this need to get, get done now, or does, can this wait? So I did want to highlight a couple, a couple notes that have come up in the, the planning process and that are remain to tonight's discussion. First being the community center that was discussed, I think, two council meetings ago. For this project, because the discussion had revolved around using general fund reserves to, to fund the purchase of the real estate, that $6 million of general fund reserves has been added to our revenue projections specifically to offset that real estate purchase. Obviously, fund reserves can be used for anything, but what our practice has been in the past has been to use those funds for real estate purchases, which we've, we've done over the past couple decades. Examples escape me right now, but, but that's, that's been a, a primary source of funding for those types of big purchases. Overlays, as we heard earlier tonight, we budgeted 2.5 million per year to maintain the current conditions. And then we had two development agreements that have expired, and the projects that were tied to those development agreements, we had funds previously obligated to those projects. We have since allowed those funds to be reallocated to new projects. Staff does recommend keeping some of those funds available just in case the development agreements, the developers come back with a new development agreement and we end up moving forward with those. But we wanted to, to use those funds so we could try to get more projects done in the next two years. The two projects in question are the 138th at 171st Roundabout and then the 138th Grid Road.
Councilmember, Councilmember Beth Campbell has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the, the community center. So, if I recall, we didn't have a public vote on that. That was just a discussion item in the council chamber. So until, it just feels like we're putting the cart before the horse here that we're putting the money aside and we're saying it's non-discretionary, which means we don't have any choice, it has to be spent before we've taken a vote on it. So I'm, I'm a little confused as why we're going in this order as opposed to the normal order where we elect to have something and we opt in to including it as opposed to just saying, well, there was a discussion and we're going to put a placeholder here.
Thank you. So, and that's, that's why I wanted to highlight that the $6 million is from the general fund reserve. The only reason we added it in there was because of that item, but it's, it's subject to, to being removed at, at council's pleasure, which, at which point we would remove the $6 million in revenue from the general fund reserves as well. But because of previous council discussions, we wanted to make sure it was in there so we didn't lose sight of it. We knew that it was being accounted for and we were showing where that funding was, was coming from. But I would agree, of the non-discretionary projects, that's probably the, the least non-discretionary, depending on what council chooses to do with that particular purchase.
And then just one quick follow-up. In terms of pulling out of the general fund reserves for projects, do we have a criteria system that we've set in place for it, or is it just sort of at, at the discretion of council in situ? Do we just decide at a time that general fund reserve should be used for this project, or do we have some sort of consistent criteria that the public can depend on?
It is, it is a council discretionary. We don't have any established criteria. That's, those are reserves that are set there for any purpose that the council deems appropriate and necessary.
Thank you.
And then last, last topic on this slide is a reminder that typically, we do try to fund projects 100% whether we are planning to complete them or maybe even kick them off in the next two years or not. There are exceptions. There is one in our recommended list today that I'll, I'll highlight when we get to the attachment to the list, the recommended list. But typically, we try to fund things at 100% because we don't want to find ourselves at construction time and not have the funding to do a project that we've already invested substantial funds and staff resources into doing. There were also some, some recent changes I highlighted in the staff report and wanted to again highlight here. The East Trail Project from 2013, we ended up eliminating the 2013 project and recreating it as a new project. The big reason we wanted to do this is because the project is different from what we had originally envisioned back in, would have been 2012, if not earlier. And we wanted to really highlight that the new project is not just a trail, it's also the linear park. And so, so we wanted to kind of, kind of bump it up on the list, especially with all the excitement around the, the raise grant. Another important note for this project is it's also added to the street section of the, the CIP. And both of them show that the project's a $7.1 million, but the project's a $7.1 million, it's not 7.1 times two. We just wanted to make sure that was shown there. The reason it's on the street section is because the trail, the, the actual trail portion, the portion of the project is a multimodal trail, so it does kind of fall into that streets category. And having it in the street section will give us the, a higher likelihood of getting grants. And we didn't want to lose sight of it come the TIP process, the Transportation Improvement Plan process next year. The reason it maintains the, the P designation in the ID number is because the project going to be managed as one, we use that code in our internal system, and, and so it's a little confusing, but we thought this was the best solution to kind of a tricky, a tricky situation.
Oh, let me add on that too, Kevin. It also connects back to our previous conversation about the TIF, or the, the traffic impact fees, where we've gone to a multimodal system there. So this would allow at least some portion of that future project, the trail specifically, as opposed to the, the park amenities, to be eligible for TIF funds when we, when we apply those.
Following up on that, how, how do you, while we're in flux as far as what our TIF rates are going to be, how do you project out what that revenue looks like over the next two years? Is that a guesstimate, or are you basing that on where you think we'll land, or where you recommend we'll land, or how, how does that work?
Make sure I'm understanding. So the question is on how we're projecting the TIF revenues for the upcoming two years when we're in the middle of talking about changing them. Right now, the estimates that we have in the, in the package here and kind of where we've ended up and determine where that, that line is that we're going to look at here, is based on trend lines, recent, over recent years. So it will be off if we go and change these in the middle of, of this cycle. But it's, it's a pretty safe assumption. We are, you know, this is still very early on in that kind of final draft creation. That, that number will change based on traffic impact fee changes, but also on kind of fine tuning the calibration on our estimates of, of large construction projects, which create TIF and sales tax on construction, both of which are CIP funds, between now and when we have a final package ready for you guys to, to take action on.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I think that gets back to my earlier question. How do we balance, and I rely on some expertise on how we balance the TIF rate that is appropriate to collect an amount versus too high, which kills that amount. Does that make sense?
Yeah, exactly. And it also, I think, highlights the importance of what Mr. O'Neill talked about of, we're not at the point right now where we're recommending spending everything that we think we're, might get, because there is still that, that variability in revenues one direction or the other, and I don't want to come up short when everybody is sold on an exciting list of projects.
Well, then we blame you.
It's usually how it goes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the next item I wanted to highlight is the police cameras, both the, the speeding cameras that we just heard about, as well as license plate readers. We've removed those from the CIP list. We haven't removed them from consideration. We've just, through looking at it, we figured they don't fit into a typical CIP project. So they will still be considered by, by council, just not through this particular process. We also removed some other projects that were typically just studies or maintenance. And, and then the number five on the list, which is we moved those to 138th projects. And then lastly, we renumbered everything. Not everything, the, the new projects. And the reason I want to highlight that is because if you were to compare the list that came before council, last time I spoke to you about this topic, to this list, things aren't going to line up. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Let me add on to the, the studies piece too, because I think that's important. I know there are some projects that council members and councils as a whole were interested in. One example that stands out is the West Ridge Connector. That's a study and alternative analysis of what that future connection could look like. That's been removed from the CIP, but you'll see that come up in the budget proposal as an operating expenditure.
Okay, so we've reached the, the real meat of tonight's discussion, which is the actual list. I wanted to start with just a brief overview of the, the non-discretionary projects. In, in this table, we have the, the budget that we are expecting for the next biennium. One project, we have actually spent some of the, the previously allocated money. And then it showed the total project cost and the existing funding. And that's where we were able to determine what the shortfall is. It only applies to a few projects, but that's where that 9.5 million dollars comes from that has to be spent towards non-discretionary projects to make it whole.
Sorry, just a specific question on the 124th sidewalk, that $400,000 discrepancy in what was budgeted and, and the projected cost. Is that purely because of increases in construction costs, or was there other factors that led to that jump?
Mr. Sousa, maybe you can jump in.
That was, those are the, the initial cost that was there for 124th was done in the last biennium. So those are the cost increases, just to show the escalation.
Okay, thank you.
So this slide is to, it shows the discretionary projects and staff's recommendation. The projects above the green line are projects that staff is recommending for funding. I did want to just kind of explain a couple things on this table, because I know it's confusing. We tried to cram a lot of information to this attachment, because I didn't want a lot of fragmented attachments, cross-referencing each other. But the last two columns, the running allocation and remaining available funds, those are pretty much two different categories, right? One is showing each project as we work our way towards the full $22 million estimated revenues available. And the other, this, the last, the remaining available funds is how much do we have left? So it's getting smaller as we go. The items below in the red section, those are items that kind of drip, dip under that, that reserve level that we were talking about from the, the carryover projects that were, come from expired development agreements. So if we were to stop at the green line, that would leave us $850,000 in, in reserve. However, the table continues into the red, just to kind of show you where, where those numbers fall. The one, the first project, the northeast 171st Street Slope Stability, this project is the section of 171st east of 140th, as you work your way up the hill, as the road kind of becomes kind of winding. I'm sure Mr. Sousa can add, some, add some more context to this, but this is a critical project that if it is not done, it does risk the integrity of the road. And repairing the road could be, I don't know how many times more expensive than doing this project to, to shore it up. The, the project below it is also tied to this project. However, it would be the last phase, which is why you'll see that the recommended budget is only 220,000 rather than the full 1.1 million. And that's because, because it's coming later, because we're confident that it won't happen in this biennium, we only wanted to front-load the, the design and permitting portion of that project. Next on the list is where we park refurbishments. This is on the list because a lot of the, the place structures, the climbing wall, they're in dire need of, of repair from a safety standpoint. Next, you'll see the overlays being funded at 2.5 million dollars a year, so a total of five for the biennium. Next is adding a RFB at 156th and 198th. And follow-up is refurbishment of the Wooden Creek Tennis Courts across the street, the, the surface itself, as well as the fencing. And the last above the green line is the tourist district parking lot. So demolition of the, of the buildings and a temporary parking surface.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Can you say a little bit more about that? I don't recall the tourist district parking lot. Could you give some details on when that was voted on, what that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Buchanan.
This, this is the portion of the lot that via development agreement amendment with Wood Mountain, the Wyandotte Village developer, is being donated to the city for use as parking in that area.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought this was. And if I recall correctly, one of the things that came up is that we said we did not want to say that this was a foregone conclusion that it was a parking lot.
So the 340 here is solely the demolition costs for the two structures that are on there and some outbuildings, and then graveling that lot for a temporary parking lot, if that's, that's what that $340,000 would cover.
I, I do think we should revisit this in detail to better understand what this project entails.
Well, Mr. Buchanan, I think I wanted to hand it back to you. I know you, City Manager wanted to make a couple of comments before we kind of dive into the, the discussion portion of this.
Thank you. I, I'll add, and you've all heard this before, but I would be remiss not to repeat the old refrain, that this list is financially constrained. It is not the time and resource constrained from the staff perspective, which is, I won't let Austin speak to that, but I think does cause some stress among some of our staff here this evening, this, this lengthy list. And as such, this would likely be a, a conversation, it will be a conversation as we get into budget proposals and budget discussions here in the coming months. So, yeah, this is, this alone is an ambitious list. You add this with the non-discretionary projects, and it certainly gives, I know some of our staff some heartburn. So it, it will need to be a consideration as far as staffing resources and from a time perspective as well in the coming, coming conversation.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
I don't know if we want to talk about the below the line projects yet. If you have some sort of presentation on that, I'd be happy to defer until we have that discussion. But I do have some comments about the below the line projects.
I think this is, this is the conclusion of, of the presentation. I think at this point, we're certainly happy to entertain any, any questions and, and help facilitate any conversation on the topic.
Yeah.
Okay. No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So yeah, at this point, we're, we want to have a discussion with council to see how our recommendations align with, or don't, with council's priorities and where there are, there, there may be adjustments that should be made. We don't want to get into, you know, figuring out the math necessarily, but just getting an idea of where there can be changes. I do not have a slide with all of the, the additional projects below the red line, only because it would be so small, we couldn't use it anyways. Hopefully, we can refer to attachment two in the staff report for, for that section. But, but certainly anything on the attachment, any of the project lists, you know, we're happy to answer questions or help facilitate that discussion.
So, since I saw the floor, I just wanted to get out the last budget. We talked about the streetlights and the sidewalk on 136, and they, the neighborhoods were told absolutely next biennium, they'll be there. And when I look at our project list, a lot of what I consider to be fun projects are on the list, but we seem to be missing some of the infrastructure that we just spent the better part of an hour talking about in the last agenda item, which is pedestrian safety for kids walking to school. So 181st Place is streetlights, so kids aren't standing in the dark on the sidewalks as they wait for their bus. And then the 136 sidewalk, that is a proven area where kids walk to school en masse. And that's also an area where teenagers drive, who are generally not careful drivers. So there are, there are parts of the discretionary budget that, or the non-discretionary, pardon me, that I me, that I think should be made discretionary. So I do think that any potential purchase of land for a community center really is not a fait accompli. I do think it's something that we should discuss and then weigh against these improvements that the public has been asking for. People want a community center, absolutely, but people also want a safer out to school for their kids. And if you were to ask them which would they want, I think we would get a lot of different answers, and it's important for us to hear what is their priority. This isn't our budget, this is our, as in the city's budget. So I would be, I would be in favor of removing the $6 million from non discretionary to discretionary and have more conversation on that, and move up some of these projects that have been promised to the neighborhoods for years.
Councilmember.
Thank you. I would certainly think that a couple of the projects below the red line, the streetlights and the sidewalk, are both in alignment with our push for safety improvements throughout the city. I'll also say that I've spoken to residents in both neighborhoods, walked the street along 136, and I've kind of tried to understand the the reasons that these issues are being brought up, and I think that those things deserve our attention. I am concerned, given the city manager's comments, that we will have spent our money way before, way past our time. And so I, for me, I think it's really important that we have information about what is the staff actually capable of delivering on in the next biennium before before we just say all the money here everywhere. But what can our staff do? Do we need to constrain this list significantly? And then how how does that impact the rankings on some of these projects? I know, for example, one of the reasons that the streetlight on 181st didn't get funding in the last biennium was the difficulty of working with PSE, and just how hard that was, how much time it took, and and their backlog contributing to why we could not tackle that project in the last biennium. Has that changed? Are we just going to shift the money around to elevate these projects and then not be able to accomplish them? So that that is a bigger question, but something that certainly, yes, these are big issues with our our neighborhoods, and I certainly, these are neighborhoods who have been active in asking for this for several years. They've shown up, they've emailed, especially on the 136 sidewalk. What could we do to help address these concerns? But also, are we over committing? Just because we might be able to financially, you know, we have this much money, do we have that much time? So that that is kind of a bigger question I have on the kind of the next iteration of the CIP. Like realistically, we know how much time all of these grant applications took. We know how much time all of the grant reporting will take. I'd rather deliver on what we say we're going to deliver than over promise on this one. So that's my comment.
Councilmember Evans.
If we were to take the potential for a community center, because obviously, there's still a lot of things happening, and we're just sort of earmarking that, but if we were to take that potential out of this budget, it would also remove that $6 million from this, correct? Unless council decided to dip into reserves to go back and fund additional projects that we don't actually have funds for.
That's, yes, you're correct. This is, that's dipping into savings to pay for that. It's not taking money that is otherwise unless council designates it going to CIP projects.
So traditionally, we've dipped into reserves when we're making an investment in property. Have we dipped into reserves when we weren't in some sort of budget crisis to fund CIP projects?
They, I would have to go back and look. If Mr. Fritz was here, he could probably point to examples, but I believe they've been relatively minor. So the the CIP uses would be like was mentioned, large property purchases, which haven't happened for a number of years, probably most recently would be some of the properties, like the Wood Trails properties, when we bought those.
Okay. And then, as I know at the beginning of this presentation, you talked about how you did the ranking. So can you just talk to us a little bit about why the streetlights along 181st and the sidewalk at 134th or 6th, I can't even read it, at 136th, which I've also walked, and I understand the desire? We've heard from the administrators at the schools around there about close calls, and so I would just like to know why those ranked lower compared to some of the other things?
I don't have the exact scores for for each project in front of me right now, for for the five different categories. But I'll also add that these two sections on the slide before you, they are still ranked by priority. I believe the City Hall Car Charger, one rank, I have, I don't want to, I don't want to make any promises.
And I'm not so worried about the car chargers as as I am about these other two, because we've just heard from so many people about them.
Yeah, I think part of the issue, so you've got the the ranking, and which ends up, I think, in generally pretty tight range of scores for a lot of these projects, right? There's not a huge disparity between the project at the top of this, the above the line list, and like the 136 sidewalk, as far as the score from those five or six different criteria that we look at. I think part of why you're seeing below, a big part of why you're seeing below and above the line here, is there's the, some of those items above the line that are probably more discretionary, so something like the tourist district parking lot, the tennis courts, the the RFB. You can move those down, certainly, and they're probably pretty close in score to some of those ones below the line, but moving those down doesn't necessarily pay for anything to move above the line, unless, like, you could move those three bottom above the line down and move the streetlights up, but if you move those three down, you're still not paying for this 136 sidewalk, if that makes sense.
And then for the tourist district parking lot, I know, once we take possession of that property, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to do something with those buildings, otherwise they could become a public nuisance.
We have, at minimum, we need to secure them, right? And that, and that to your, you didn't ask a question, but inherent in that, possession is at the end of this year.
Right. And so we will have a fiduciary responsibility for that, and whether we turn it into a full parking lot, or we gravel it over and secure it for some later use, we still will have some things that we're going to have to do since we are taking possession. That's correct, okay. I think that might be all that I have for right now. Thank you.
So at this stage, we can revisit the the rec center. I think, I think the rec center is certainly something that the public has asked for, enhancements to our parks and recs department. And I also think it's it's fiscally responsible, because I can tell you right now, and I said this before, that the public is clamoring for more parks and rec types of things. And if we don't put forward on this unique opportunity to serve our public with a park and recs center and possibly a pool attached, we are going to get mounting pressure, the city council is going to get mounting pressure to to spin up a parks and recs department. I talk to people all the time, and that is a, it's survey after survey, and we highlighted it when we talked about it, has talked about parks and recs and enhancements to our parks and trails being a really high priority. So I would not want to see that opportunity lost. We have an opportunity to purchase property, forward it to the NPRSA, we could lease it to them for a buck a year, they would undertake all the operations, construction and maintenance costs of it. That that is a fiscally responsible way to serve our public, because if we don't do it down the road, council is going to get mounting pressure to to fund a parks and recs departments, which would be markedly more expensive than doing this. And I'm not saying that the rec center would be the end all, be all forever for that that service, but it certainly would help it. I, you know, I've been a champion of low emission vehicles for our city. I have no problem moving down the the car chargers, because I don't think we're in any near term rig replacement that would need a car charger, and I think what we're doing right now is fine. I, I too would like to see the streetlight project, and that's budgeted at $500,000, but I, I do know that that's constrained by PSE. We don't know where PSE is at. Would that be correct? So, and I also know that these projects that we had a discussion before, that we don't know what's in the ground when we go do these streetlights. So is it possible with those two unknowns to to do some type of a look? Can we hire somebody to look and and bring out those instruments where they determine where the water lines and all the other stuff that would be in our way? And also reach out to PSE to see what their capacity is, because they're the ones that are going to be doing that project. So budgeting $500,000 to something that might not be possible, maybe we move that down to $100,000 to research, or at least start the process of getting permits and getting underway with PSE versus the $500,000. This, the, the, what do we call it? The slope stability was, is a great project, but I'm told, that's a six year project?
It's, it's certainly going to be more than the two years by the time we're done with permitting and design and everything.
So I would also advocate, since that's a longer term project, that we don't have to, in this budget, we don't have to set aside all $6 million. And I think if we, whatever the last phases of that, we, we can do that in the next CIP proposal. So that would be something that I would advocate for. And then, I know the sidewalks, we had numerous discussions about that, and that 1.87, and I, again, I advocate that's, that's near a school, it has a need, we have lots of desire to do that. Is that the full sidewalk with the curbs and everything else? Okay, so I've looked at that road as like everybody else, and I know that some areas similar to that will have the soft shoulders that don't have to have all of the curbing and the expensive part of that. Can we, can we do that and save a little bit of money to afford all those projects? And then, and the last thing I'll say, I had an experience recently with an award winning restaurateur who won an international award and a US award that I took on a tour around Woodenville. He wants to open up a second location. So I put him in contact with the people over at Harvest and and Main Street and Green Partners, and said, these are areas that you might consider opening up your second restaurant, which would be, I went, I went to his restaurant, and it was amazing, it's best pizza I've ever had. And, and what he told me was that Harvest was out, because he has no place for his employees to park. So we, we're getting it, we, we got a free lot over there, we can turn it into a flat surface, which will buy us some time to figure out what the next step is, and that would be roughly 50 stalls and a gravel lot that we could, you know, serve the public, and we could turn a number of those over to employees, or whatever we want to do. But I think it would be, I, I think that area is screaming for parking solutions, and this seems to be the route that we can solve some of those parking solutions, which our businesses and our residents, in fact, I was out to the the ballfields today, they're putting in some AEDs at all the the ballfields out there, at the county ballfields. And they are all screaming, they're, you know, during a ballgame, they don't have any place to park, because people using the trails and using the businesses there are parking in their lot. So we don't, we can't quantify how much sales tax and business, and in the instance that I just gave, is just one example of somebody not coming to Woodenville, I think that would be wildly popular, and that we, we would benefit from. So I, I strongly think that we should keep the the parking on the, on the must do list above the line. Any other questions, discussion?
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Point of order, our council rules allow two times per topic, and this will be Councilmember Beth Campbell's third time.
Points well taken. Is anybody that has not spoken?
Point of order, this is a discussion item, not a voting item.
Our, our council rules state very clearly, our rules, adopted rules, ones that you voted for, council has two times for five minutes. That's our rules.
Point of order, we have, these rules have been changed for discussion items that have been removed in other meetings. Why is this meeting different?
Your point of order is not well taken, that is at my discretion. We have five minutes for two council members per time. So Councilmember Evans' point is well taken. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken twice that would like to add anything to the discussion? Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I think the parking lot is definitely something that I think needs to be included right now, specifically because of the duty that we have to maintain that property. But in the meantime, it may not always stay a parking lot, but right now, it'll serve a purpose that we need in that community while we determine what those next steps are. Maybe it does turn into a parking garage, like people have talked about before, or maybe turns into something else. But having that property to serve its purpose right now, I think, is the way to go. And in terms of the community center, I think that is integral to stay in what any discussion we have here. Mayor Millman talked about how it's an opportunity, but what I see there is a time limited opportunity. We have a unique opportunity right now to potentially bring something like that to our community that may not be here one, two, three, four years down the road. So striking while we have the opportunity and making sure we don't miss it, and keeping it on the forefront is, I think, paramount to this discussion going forward. That's all I want to add for right now.
Councilmember Taylor.
I'd like to yield my time to Councilmember Beth Campbell.
That's not how the rules work, Mr. Councilmember Taylor. If you'd have, if you have something that you would like to add, please do.
So I'm, I'm not in favor of the parking lot addition, just basically, that is private property, it should be built and set up for the businesses that are renters and tenants, and it's not our business to bail them out, otherwise it's a gift of public facilities, public money to build the parking lot. It should be built by the developer.
I'm going to dispute that. I said, cities all over the nation build parking structures to serve their communities and businesses. This is a fundamental function of city government.
Point of order, is this the third time?
No, this is my second time. Point of order, not well taken. City, city governments provide infrastructure, like parking facilities, all over the place. Woodenville, it's not a gift of public funds. We could certainly do a revenue bond and have people use it, and it's, 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 that area is demonstrably underserved for parking and has been for a significant, significantly long time. We have a lot, it's not private property, it was, it was given to us in a modification of a development agreement, it's our property, or at least it will be at the end of the year. So we, as a council, have options to do with that. I'm of the opinion that turning it into a flat surface parking structure until we figure out what the longer term use for it is, is a responsible way to go. And there are numerous safety issues at that property, the way people are parking, there's demonstrative, demonstratable need for the the trails and the businesses that are in Woodenville there, and their employees that are taking up parking stalls. And, and what I don't hear is other solutions for parking at, at that site. And I've looked for years, I've not seen anything that is workable or solves that particular solution. And I'm going to piggyback on Councilmember Edwards, we, we have a unique opportunity to have a rec center built and operated for us, that will serve our community, that's, that's clamoring for that service. It, it It's time-sensitive because we have deadlines and this is a unique opportunity. And if we, I think it would be a little, I think it would be not a little bit, I think it would be completely negligent and I don't think, I think the public would, knowing that this is an opportunity, would hold us accountable for this. So, Deputy Miranda.
I definitely agree that the opportunity for the center, it should remain there. However, to the parking lot thing, once again, we mentioned that we did not want it to be a foregone conclusion that it was a parking lot. There are things that I want to make sure are clear here, and this is a kind of question for you, Mr. City Manager. We definitely should do what's necessary in order to take possession of the land, if that includes making changes there. And that's by our code that we have to make changes. Fantastic, let's do that. My question is, by turning that into a flat lot, how many spaces do we get by doing that?
That's, I think the mayor mentioned, I think, just remembering offhand, it was 50-something. That was just surface parking spaces.
And is there anything else we would be able to do with it at that point?
I mean, once it's, I mean, at any point, we can determine its future, right? If it's a gravel lot, it's whatever council wants to ultimately do with it. If it's buildings and we secure the buildings, there's potentially some options with that in the interim too. So that obviously would come at the cost of interim parking, but that warrants further conversation, I think.
Okay. And a question for you, Mayor Millman, is it sounds like you were talking with someone who might.
Point of order, sorry, we can't ask each other questions on the dais.
I believe that Mayor Millman and I have talked about this, and I can say, for clarity, if someone who has spoken to the person who wanted to bring the restaurant here, can you talk about why they brought together the idea or why they brought up the idea of parking and how we would be able to create an opportunity with parking and what that
I'm going to hold myself to the same standard of two times on this issue, on this subject, but we can certainly discuss this further if you'd like, and I'm happy to discuss it next time we bring up CIP. Any further discussion? Okay, seen none. Let's move on to public comments. We have anybody signed up? Okay, thank you. Ports City Manager.
Just two items briefly, and I'm sure that several councilmembers will probably pile on this, so I won't get too much into it, but we had a great turnout and I think a successful event this last Saturday for our open house next door. Thank you for all of you who were able to come in and spend some time and visit and talk about the projects and all the work that the city is doing there, including council members and the public. And then we continue our community engagement tomorrow evening with the Celebrate Woodenville concert, again, taking input and people's thoughts on the stage bolt launch concepts that we have assembled so far. So hopefully people are able to come out and share their thoughts and ideas on that as well. Thank you.
Okay, council. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Last week, I was at the Quarterly East Rail Rack meeting, and during that meeting, they asked for two things. They asked that we adopt some principles that would govern the entire trail, and they also asked that we take a look at some funding for East Rail Partners, which is core in helping us secure both private and public funding. I've worked with Mr. Hill to see if we can bring some of those back because I told the Rack that I was not able to commit on behalf of Woodenville. So I'm hoping at a future, at a meeting very soon, that we'll be able to have that. But I did want to update everybody, our next meeting is in October, so ideally, they would like to have some guidance from us by that time. And so there's just a few things that are coming for East Rail. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the amazing work that's happened this summer in terms of community engagement. It really took it to the next level. One area I really wanted to highlight was the social media presence, the work that's been done there. It really built on what we had and really the content there has really stepped up to the next level. It's been really impressive to see how much growth has happened on that area in such a short amount of time. So hopefully we can continue to build on that. And again, all the great work to get out to the community this summer. Amazing job.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Amen to Councilman Edwards' input, nothing else.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
There we go. Just one thing, I had a conversation with a community member about sidewalks and approachability via ADA ramps. There was a complaint about the sidewalk, so I think it's between the Woodenville Community Church and where Caliente and Pasta Nova are. That particular section is very difficult to navigate on an electric wheelchair, and there have been times when this individual has been kicked off of their wheelchair. I wanted to get an update on where our ADA program is. We went through a really long process in identifying all these properties, so I want to make sure that we're actually putting our resources into the things that people are asking for. So something, particularly in downtown, that is where people are and that is where people are walking because that's our walkable downtown. So I look forward to an update on that.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. Just two updates tonight. The NPRSA, at their next meeting, will be having a discussion of the siting criteria for any future youth or community center. The date of that meeting has not been set. It will be a special meeting, possibly in August, but that would be the opportunity to really dig into what criteria they will be using. And I know the criteria will be communicated to the city staff prior to that meeting in terms of what they are looking for specifically. So I would like, I think Jared is either already received that or will shortly, and I will ask him to forward that on to all councils so that we can all be aware of what criteria they are using to inform any discussion that we have here on the dais. The other thing I wanted to bring to council attention, at the last Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting a few weeks ago, sorry, long day, we had a presentation on Bellevue's Bellhop Program. It's now one year in, and it was a very intriguing program. They've had a ton of success on a program that provides free transportation around their downtown core and is all run through a private company and funded, the majority of which is funded through tax on hotel stays. So I think that is certainly something that we could add to the mix of discussions in the city with our partners, not solely ourselves, but how can we, on a future meeting, investigate that or something similar for Woodenville?
Councilmember Taylor.
Nothing to report tonight.
I got a few things, I'll try to get through these really quickly. I just got a snail mail from Congresswoman Delbene. I'll read it to you. It was great to connect with you and your team to hear an update on the important projects underway in Woodenville. It's exciting to see how the city is sequencing these projects and repurposing the old trestle for the 134th culvert. I look forward to working with you as we continue to address the infrastructure needs facing the city. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me or your team if we can be of assistance. Sincerely, Congresswoman Delbene. I thought that was great, and I think it's a good example of working with our partners to achieve stuff that would be much more difficult for a city of our size and 50 staff. So I think kudos to staff and Congresswoman Delbene. I've recently had several conversations with elected officials that have a vested interest in the transfer station, and I can say universally that we have been recognized to have done a good job on our EIS and our economic impact and our political push. And so that's heading in a direction that I'm pretty happy with. The Bellhop thing, they reached out also. I actually had a conversation with about that, how popular that program is in Bellevue with a Bellevue council member today. And there, he was gushing over how popular the program is and how well it's received in Bellevue. So I look forward to having conversations more with that. I had something that I want to put on council's radar. We have a pretty big event happening in our area. World Cup's coming in two years, and I had a conversation with a former professional soccer player that's affiliated with the World Cup here movement, and we had a great conversation about how Woodenville could take advantage of it with watch parties and some tourism. I told him that I would put him in touch with Chateau Saint Michelle for a possible site for a watch party. The Somm Hotel could be another site for a watch party. And I relayed this on, and perhaps the city could do some, it's June, there is, one of the matches is June 19th, and we could do some type of watch party at Wilmont or something like that, that I think the public would be very in favor of. Regardless, this is a unique event that is bringing hundreds of thousands, maybe a million, to this region, and we should be having discussions soon about how we could capitalize on that and also serve our community. I had also a tour with a local church that wants to move forward with a cooling center. They are in the process of putting AC, so I had a look at their site, and I think they were saying it could serve, I think the occupancy was 200, but maybe at 200, it would get pretty hot. It's in their basement, but that's a good opportunity that I think we have to serve our community for a future cooling center. So that's all I have. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.[1785.96]